Good evening, everyone. This is the Township of Franklin Township Board meeting on the December 20th at 7:00 PM. If anyone will please rise for the flag.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The open public meeting statement, please.
Notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Open Public Meeting Act and the Annual Analysis of Meetings. The copy was posted on the Township website and notice of the meeting was sent to the Sentinel copy was posted in Franklin Township Municipal Building.
Roll call.
Mayor Bruno.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Constantine.
Here.
Committeewoman Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Maloney.
Here.
Mr. Ranson.
Here.
Mr. Stipper.
Here.
Mr. Swede.
Here.
Mr. Travolino.
Here.
Chairman Patch.
Here. Excuse me, here. Okay. We... There's no resolutions at this time. Is there a motion to approve the November 2022 minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes of November.
Second. Move in second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion. I have a section down there.
We do have one resolution from PB 2010.
Yep. I say it my first. Okay. At this time, I entertain a motion for PB 20210 for Part III Management.
I'll make a vote.
A motion.
Second.
On a second. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Bruno.
Upstate.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Ms. Lynn. Upstate. Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Maloney.
Yes.
Mr. Ranson.
Yes.
Mr. Stipper.
Yes.
Mr. Swede. Mr. Travolino.
Yes.
Chairman Patch.
Yes. Okay, thank you. All right. At this time, we'll move on to the redevelopment plan for 4047 presentation by CME. Michael, you want to go first, please?
Yes. Do board members have the letter requesting it post-public? For not a reading? You don't have to... See the letter in December 19th? It reads as follows. It's from Jeffrey, the resident's flyer. This firm represents...
Mr. Microphone, please. Yeah, here's your...
Speaking of the lights.
This firm represents Barbara Halpern, a Franklin Township resident, property owner and concerned citizen. We have been engaged to review the area in...
Chat here?
Chat here.
Chat here. Let's talk louder.
My voice. We have been engaged to review the area in need of redevelopment. Preliminary investigation report for the Route 40 through Route 55 interchange area prepared by consulting and municipal engineers. As my understanding, the planning board intends to conduct a hearing on the same tomorrow night. I am writing to respectfully request that the planning board adjourn the hearing until its next regularly scheduled meeting in January of 2023. Unfortunately, neither I nor my partner nor our planner are available to appear at the currently scheduled hearing. I would note that an adjournment is within the authority of the planning board. Additionally, as my understanding, there may have been an issue with the public availability of the preliminary investigation report. I will thank the planning board in advance for consideration of this request. On behalf of my client, I reserve all rights and leave none. There's a request for one of the residents, which are presented by counsel for post-public because of his unavailability. And so before you start, you need to address that first.
Okay.
Whether or not he will be able to come.
All right. With that said, this plan, this study has been on the docket or talked about. It started back on October 25th. And formally sent to us on November 9th. And then the plan was... The engineer was requested to do it back on November 15th. So with that said, there's approximately 60 days that this has been out there. So this is not something new. His conflict, I don't know that his... We have an audience full of people this evening that came out on a holiday week to postpone it because of his inavailability. I don't know if there's merit there. Quite honestly, this is a study that we're handing to the Township Committee. So if there was a future development, I'm of the impression... I am of the thought that it would be... His comments would be directed more towards the Township Committee than the study that we were tasked to do and only passing on to the Township Committee. I'll yield to the board members for their input at this time.
Well, it's not a good study. And I don't see if there's no reason why we can't look at the study. We have no say in what we hand it on to the committee.
Speak up.
There'd be a lot of people that could comment at that time.
Joe, just to adjust to one part of the letter regarding there may have been an issue with public availability of the preliminary investigation report. First of all, let me make clear the notice was properly provided.
Correct.
There's no issue. The report was out there on the Township website, I guess, for at least a week. I'm not sure exactly of that date. But it was on the website. So I think we're in compliance with notice. I don't want the board to think there's any issue with that. We are okay with that. Yes, Steve, you're correct that that is only a recommendation. The governing body can accept your recommendation and they can reject it. They can do nothing. At this point, it's you making a recommendation. They either find that all the areas are in need of redevelopment and none of the areas are in need of redevelopment where some are and some aren't. So you're able to take that determination tonight. But it has no effect as far as you being able to make it a redevelopment area. Township Committee will then get that recommendation, be able to decide how to proceed. And then at that point, there will be other proceedings such as adopting an ordinance, adopting resolutions as to whether they are or not moving ahead. All right? Just that's it. Yeah, nutshell.
Like he closed his letter, his closing sentence says, you know, he reserves all his rights and waves none. What does he mean by that? What rights is he talking about?
I mean, don't interpret his letter as meaning anything as far as assuming anything being waived or just a...
A term language.
A term of...
I mean, I just want to try to, you know, I mean, not to read anything more than... Not to read anything more into the letter than what it says, I guess, would be the interpretation. I mean, to buzz out of it with all these people, I would rather hear the people in the group tonight and, you know, and get the feedback from the people and feel like everybody's opinion over this.
Which is in your discretion, three words.
Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to either move forward or postpone. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to move forward.
I have a motion to move forward. Is there a second?
I'll make a second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
That may be beyond my abilities.
Just to clarify, Joe, we only have a... We have extra members, so the two alternates wouldn't be participating tonight.
Okay.
So as far as Steve making the second, really shouldn't do that. So...
I'll make that second.
All right.
Probably should do a roll call since there was...
Okay. Just having this through a roll call, please.
The two alternates would not be voting.
I'm saying it because it's... You just can't vote. You just say your...
We hope that it's voted off until after we hear the public. Now, I would, because the issues that she brings up, I think we all have them with some of this plan.
Well, I know she's not restricted from speaking tonight. We're not going to say you can't speak because your attorney's not here. I did speak to him. And I let him know that the decision would be made tonight. So as a courtesy, I let him know that. But he said if, you know, if we were to move ahead, that she would speak on her own behalf. So we're not going to prevent her from speaking.
All right.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine.
No.
Ms. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Stipper.
Yes.
Mr. Swede.
Yes.
Mr. Travolino.
No.
Chairman Patch.
Yes. Okay, we're going to move forward. All right, Michael, all my alternates, they stay... Short of voting, they stay up here. And the only thing they can't do, in case someone in the future moving forward, if there was another hearing, we'd be able to use the alternate at that point in time. So they would stay here. And the only thing they would not be able to do is vote.
They can't participate. They can't...
Put in a question and answer thing in case we need them at a future time.
Correct.
Okay. Got it. I just want to make sure that we're right on the record.
I will spread you in when you're...
Okay. All right.
That now.
Okay.
I'm sort of fascinated about the little bit of truth that we've got.
I do. So for the record, good evening, members, chairman, and members of the public. For the record, my name is Malvika Apte, last name spelled A-P-T-E, from CME Associates. My address is 1469 Route 9, Howell, New Jersey. Little briefly about my background. I'm a licensed professional planner and nationally accredited AICP certificate planner. I have served as board planners in numerous towns all throughout New Jersey. I've also been accepted as an expert in Superior Court in Burlington County as well as Camden County.
Okay. Does there anyone have questions on the qualifications? If not, we accept you as an expert witness.
Thank you. Thank you, chairman.
Okay. Why don't you talk to us about the study that is... Everyone in the community is interested in.
Sure. Just a couple of administration items. I have prepared exhibits. These are basically just blown up versions of the map that are in the report itself. The report was prepared by CME. It's dated November 28th, 2022. And it's titled "Non-condemnation Area in Need of Redevelopment: Preliminary Investigation Report." So I'm going to start putting them on. I know if board wants me there.
We have that. Can you put it up on the air?
Sure.
Or is it like a...
Okay. You. Sorry about that.
If you would... The unit I asked you to do is refer to the page number when you fill out the next... Your own page, Mr. Barlow.
That's right.
As you move through this evening, please refer to the page number that you're submitting your...
Okay. Perfect. So, starting again, good evening. So this presentation is on the report that I just referred to, dated November 28th, 2022. The objective of the report is to study what we call the study area. And I'll get into the details of the study area and whether it can be determined as a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment. The study area itself consists of about 188 properties, approximately 380 acres. A brief review before I get into the study itself as to how this entire process works, because I think there are some questions on that. The first step, it's the local redevelopment housing law is a state statute that authorizes every municipality within the state of New Jersey to do this redevelopment plan process. It's a multi-step process and we are, for lack of a better word, at the step one of the process. First step that starts is the governing body of any municipality decides to authorize the planning board to undertake a study and to determine if said properties can be designated. In that resolution, when the governing body authorizes the planning board, they have to declare whether they are studying it for condemnation or non-condemnation. As specified, the resolution dated October 25th, 2022, as well as November 9th, 2022, directed planning boards to do these studies as non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment. After which, the township authorized CME Associates to prepare this study as professional planners to do our observations and to prepare this report. The third step of this process is this study has to be presented in a... As a public hearing by the planning board, which is where we are today. Following this, once the board has heard, planning board has heard the study and based on that, they make their recommendations to the governing body. Then, the governing body can decide whether to designate the whole properties as they have been laid out, whether to designate part of the properties, or whether to not designate at all. It is, the designation is done by the governing body. The first step to determine if the area is in need of redevelopment is the... The local redevelopment housing law basically has eight criterias or what we commonly refer to as criteria A to G. Any property to meet that criteria has to meet one of those criteria laid out in the local redevelopment housing law. There is another caveat known as Section 3, which basically means that if a property by itself cannot be designated in any... Cannot meet any of these criteria but is essential for an overall comprehensive redevelopment of this area, then that can be included. That's identified as Section 3. It's a definition of the local redevelopment housing law. So that was more of an administration and outline of how this whole process works. Now I'm going to get into what the report has and how it works.
Is there any questions about that? Air out the piece of the... For me, very clear.
Okay. Thank you.
And a commend... Non-condemnation. Just highlight on that exactly what that... Exactly what that means.
So, non-condemnation designation is basically the power of eminent domain does not... Is not authorized under this.
So there's no way that this plan presented would allow commendation?
Condemnation? No. Yeah. So this designation is just a study for non-condemnation area needed redevelopment by the governing body. Okay. So...
And then just make...
Sorry.
A little clarity. Eminent domain is not part of that.
Yes.
So it can't be executed. I mean, any piece of this, the entity is not subject to an eminent domain.
That's correct. So it has been laid out in the resolution. This is non-condemnation. It cannot be used for eminent domain at all. You're welcome. So going to the study, as I briefly mentioned, it's about 188 acres. Comes up to 380 acres. Referring to the first blow up is basically the study area boundary that shows you the... All the properties that were to be studied within this area designation. It is located around Route 40, Route 55. One property has frontage along Leonard Cake Road. Most of the properties... Sure.
This side of room's okay with the flicks? We need to turn. You okay?
Okay. Sorry. Most of the properties within the study area are not directly accessible from an improved right-of-way but are located on Paper Streets. Again, this is a general overview of the area. For the purpose of this study and because of the large number of properties within this study, we broke down the report into three sections or the areas into three sections, which is again, very in-depth described in the report. There's Section 1, there's Section 2, and Section 3. Briefly, Section 1, as I'm pointing to the first exhibit, is the, you know, the northern area of the study area. There are about several properties located. This is about west of Highway 55, north of Route 40. And I said one property is on Leonard Cake Road. With the exception of that one property that is located along the frontage of Leonard Cake Road, most of the properties in this Section 1 are unimproved, vacant, and currently wooded parcels. Most of those properties that I'm highlighting in the Section 1 do not have direct access, street frontage access. The area is crisscrossed with Paper Streets. This section also has a... Two streams running through it. One is the Still Run Stream and the other one is the Little Ease Run Stream Tributaries. The Still Run is mostly located along the western portion of the property while the Little Ease runs almost parallel to the state Highway 55. The Section 2, which again, I'm pointing to the exhibit, is essentially this area of the property. This section also contains several of unimproved parcels. They are... They do have a frontage along an unimproved Paper Street. Some of the parcels have frontage on Harding Highway, Route 40, Route 55, and a small unnamed access road that runs almost parallel to the interchange. There is also a 350-foot PSENG right-of-way that runs through the area. Then the third section, which is the bottommost portion of the study area, most of these properties are south of Route 55, except three properties that are located on north side of the Harding Highway at the intersection with Oak Avenue. And I'm pointing again to the study area. That's these properties over here. Majority of these properties again are, you know, as you can see, are... Have frontage along Paper Street. Mostly is cleared land right now. As we see, it is used for some kind of agricultural purposes. Also, there are several single-family again along the frontage of Harding Highway, and I'll get into more details of that. And the eastern edge is mostly vacant. Overall, none of these properties are located in the fine lands management area. I know one-third of the township is in fine lands management area, but none of the study areas are in that. Part of the site is designated as a sewer area, although currently there is no public sewer directly available. This is also not located in any of the UEZ zone. Surrounding the study area, just generally, it's a mixture of low-density residential, small-scale commercial, and undeveloped woodlands. Northwest, pointing again to the big map, is the... I'm sure everyone knows the Iona Lake. And the south is... Southeast is the community surrounding Malaga Lake. Route 55 is a limited access highway that runs all across, around the study area. And what I mean by limited access highway is basically, you know, every highway has a designation. And limited access highway is DOT almost uses it as a freeway. So getting any kind of access permission from that is, you know, a lengthy process, so as to say, because they've already carved out the interchanges where they wanted it for this highway. It's more to travel across the state rather than to provide access to each property within the township.
Sorry to interrupt you. I want to make sure that anybody who's listening is able to come in to fulfill our public hearing. Everybody, if there's nobody outside that can't come in?
No.
Okay. I think I must move around, maybe stand anywhere else. I'll walk you through. So make sure you have the ability to see and hear what's going on. Okay?
Thank you, Michael.
So further additional reviews, we always look at, you know, the big picture of the study area. We look at the state environmental data. We, as I mentioned, we looked at those tributaries that run through the property. Again, that portion around those tributaries, there is a significant amount of wetlands and flood hazard area. Some other wetlands are found south of the Malaga Lake. There are two potential vernal habitats near the Iona Lake at Leonard Cake Road and another near Still Run. All of that, you know, is in the report or the study that we've done. The NGDEP land use, land cover data also classifies the land use on these properties. Mostly it's either woodlands, undeveloped land, or a certain portion, like I mentioned, there are some single families scattered around. Those are identified as urban developed land because naturally they're developed. And then there's portion of the land use cover which is noted as wetlands. The state planning area looks at the... This study area and provides, basically, the state development, STRP, provides guidance to all municipalities in directing where the growth should occur. For this study area, portion of it is in the PA 1, which is essentially the metropolitan planning area, which is where the state wants to direct growth because of its availability to infrastructure, availability of no kind of environmental constraints. But portion of this property is in PA 5, which is the environmentally sensitive land. Zoning, underlying zoning... Not underlying, sorry. The zoning of these properties is... Majority is an IC, interchange commercial zone, while of some of the properties, the one property on Leonard Cake Road is in the RA Residential Agriculture District. And also, this one large property, I'm again pointing to the exhibit, around south of Malaga Lake, is in the MV Malaga Village District Zone. Generally, that's the lay of the land of the study area. I had already mentioned there are eight categories and the properties have to meet only one category to be, you know, to be able to be designated as an area in need of development. Now, to prepare this study, our office officers did look at several documents that are provided to us by the township, like such as tax map data, building records. We studied the aerial photos of the study area, which is again from the NJA State website. We looked at the ownership and sales information. We found that through the tax records. We looked at the township master plans, any development history of the area. We also did Oprah, the police incident reports, fire incident reports, zoning map ordinances of the township, also environmental records for the study area. CME did conduct onsite inspections on two occasions, November 1st and again on November 9th. And overall, we, you know, did our due diligence with looking at all these documents that I just mentioned. Now I'm going to get into the details of the study and what we found.
Hang on one second. On that piece of it, is there any comments or questions? Actually, I...
I do a little bit. She said the area, as far as the state planning area boundaries go, this area falls within the metropolitan planning area, but according to the map that we have, it's mostly in PA 2, which is suburban planning area.
Oh, sorry. Yes. Sorry. High mistake. I meant PA 2. I'm just very nervous. Sorry. PA 2. But let me just remind... Sorry. And thank you for... Thank you for pointing that out. So as you can see, and it's in our report on page number eight, where it shows... Sorry, that's the sewer service area.
Page 12.
Page 12 of our report. That shows the, you know, the portion of the property that is PA 2 and the rest of the portion that's in PA 5, environmentally sensitive planning area.
Okay. Make it the... My personal concern, or I guess an informal question. The northernmost piece of property that is touching Leonard Cake Road, if that piece of property was removed from the... From this plan, from this study, would that adversely affect the redevelopment plan? My concern is traffic... If that piece of property was removed from the plan, it would block access from any possible future development, even though it's wet in that area, out to Leonard Cake Road. So is there an adverse effect to removing that a lot and not allowing access to a local route on Leonard Cake and pushing any future traffic to the state highways of 40 and 55?
I think, chairman, the best way to answer that is I would provide you my planning analysis as to why I think that property meets one of the criterias of the local redevelopment housing law in terms of how it impacts the redevelopment plan. Again, we are not at that stage. We don't know what the redevelopment plan would be. But in my professional opinion, that property can be included in this area in need of redevelopment based on one of the criterias it meets. And I present that.
Okay. It can be included.
Yes.
My question is that, does it adversely affect a redevelopment plan if it's excluded? Limiting access to Leonard Cake Road with the intent to keep traffic on the state highway?
Yes. I mean, as I just... Yes, I mean, as I just, uh, briefly mentioned about Route fifty-five being a limited access highway. And, uh, you know, not, uh, getting, um, you know, even though part of the, uh, section one of the study area is along Route fifty-five, there would be no direct access from there. The rest of the area, where yes, you have Route forty-eight a- a- access, but part of it is also constrained with, uh, wetlands. So having this property with a secondary access over there would be beneficial for the study area.
Eric, Joe, to answer that also, there is, this has been addressed in the study on page twenty-three. Uh, specifically that is, uh, block forty-three oh-one, lot eleven.
Right.
And this says, given that this property provides access to Leonard Cake Road, its inclusion in a requalified area makes necessary to properly perpetuate the redevelopment of this area as well. So to answer your question, eliminating it from this, uh, study area would have an adverse effect.
But we need to know why. I mean, I don't, I don't believe in words. I don't believe in words. I thought development, there's no way. Two-thirds of that property, that area is wetland.
Yes.
You have to build two virges.
Yes, it is.
To get over to Leonard Cake Road.
My thought is keeping traffic off local roads is, is my, and it's the, the initial reason for it. But let's leave it, let's leave that lane, we'll move on, but, uh, you know, my concern is traffic on local roads and pushing it towards state highway and it's wet out there. So is it really of a, a benefit to have it? Uh, but we'll, we'll, we'll leave that. I got a note. We'll, we'll, we'll come back to this. Let's go.
Thank you.
Let's go first round through this plan.
Thank you. So the section one that I'm referring to, again, we have a blown up version of the section one. So, um, referring to section one, it's about approximately hundred and seventy-five acres of land. Um, of the blocks and lot listed in this section, only one property is developed. And that's the property along Leonard Cake, uh, road. Almost rest of the properties is wooded vacant lands. Um, the properties are, um, seventy-one of the tax blocks that are ma- make up this section are held under common ownership. Um, except four properties which are owned by the township. Uh, the one property which we were just discussing, um, is block four-three-zero-one, lot eleven, is a narrow piece of property with some frontage on, uh, Leonard Cake Road near the intersection with the Porch Town Road. Now, the tax records indicate this property as vacant. Clearly, as everybody knows, and I'm sure all of you have driven on the property, it is not vacant. So we have noted that. Interesting point about this property is there are two principal users on the property. There are two residential users on the property. In a, um, typical, um, modern land use planning standards, when there is such a deep lot, um, and, uh, for lack of better words, sometimes flag lots are discouraged. And there's a reason for that because the emergency access, uh, becomes an issue uh, for any kind of emergency vehicles when there is, um, you know, such a depth and one property, one principal use is, uh, set back so far away from the, uh, property. Overall, um, you know, that's the only faulty arrangement, so to say, of the property. There are two, uh, principal structures. Also, if you look at the aerial images and the tax maps, it seems like some of these, uh, the properties, the way it has been developed with accessory structures and everything throughout the property, some of it straddles onto the adjacent property, which is also a paper street. Um, having said that, uh, both, uh, both homes appear to be in great conditions, but they are located in this hodgepodge of a, uh, manner, um, for the unclear configuration of this lot. Um. This, this kind of, uh, arrangement would be considered an, a faulty arrangement, even though the building themselves are not in a poor condition. Uh, having mul- multiple principal users on a single lot is also not consistent with the, uh, zoning regulations of R A district. The remainder of the section one, as noted, is, uh, you know, qualifies under the farmlands and the tax records. Um, this would probably be under the Woodlands Management Plan because clearly there's no agricultural, um, um, fieldwork being conducted there. We reviewed the historical images, the aerial images of the property, and the property has remained vacant since nineteen fifty-five. Um, several of these properties, as mentioned, have, uh, frontage along Harding Highway, Route fifty-five and Leonard Cake. Route fifty-five does have, um, you know, a limited access highway. It also has, the frontage of those properties has a six-foot high fence surrounding the right of way and limiting the access to those properties. Um, another important, interesting fact is you look at the tax records and you look at the tax assessed land value of these properties. They range from anywhere between four hundred dollars to nineteen hundred. Reflecting, again, reflecting what is deemed as the limited development value of the lands, uh, which may be because of the land of access and, um, location of the environmental constraints and so on and so forth. Um, overall, what we have found is this section one can be designated as a non-condemnation area under almost, uh, five, um, criterias. One, section C, which is about the unimproved vacant land that has remained so for more than ten years. And maybe due to the lax, lack of access in commercial zone. Um, and, uh, also even though it's municipal, some of the properties are municipal-owned vacant land, they have remained vacant. Um, as you know, the section C does say properties have remained vacant for ten years or more. They might be because of the topography, because of existing environmental constraints on the site, because of, uh, lack of access and something that cannot be developed with just instrumentality of the private capital alone. Uh, block four-three-zero-one, lot eleven, we think can be designated under section D, which is faulty arrangement and obsolete layout, or section three, where inclusion of this, uh, would provide an additional access to this area. Uh, overall, we also feel that it meets criteria E, which is the stagnant and unproductive underutilized land. Uh, again, this may be because of multiple, uh, issues. There are a bunch of, uh, paper streets on the property. Um, and what it's doing is, uh, assemblage of the properties is, uh, is becoming a tedious issue. Um, again, lack of access over here, uh, can, uh, is leading to a stagnant, underutilized land that can potentially provide opportunities for employment, services, uh, revenues to the co- to the community properly utilized. Again, keeping in mind that actually the underlying, the zone of this property is I C, uh, interchange commercial zone. So, you know, when this zone was contemplated, it was contemplated for a commercial use on this property. Moving on to, um, section two, uh, which is, um, the properties west of Route fifty-five and south of Route forty. This area is approximately seventy-seven acres. I'm just going to pull up the next, um.
Page thirty.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was proposed to tell you the page number.
Alright, page thirty.
Yeah. So, these properties, as I mentioned, is west of Route fifty-five, um, south of Route forty. It's about seventy-seven acres. Most of these properties are vacant, wooded properties. Uh, there's only one improvement. There is an electric transmission easement that, uh, cuts through portions of the lots, uh, where the ground is occasionally cleared for maintenance and so on and so forth. Um, several blocks on the western end of the property have direct frontage along Harding Highway, while, uh, several other blocks in the middle area have that access to that private driveway that runs parallel to the interchange. Uh, some of the broad, uh, properties also have access to Route fifty-five, which is more to the southern area of this property. Um, section, just like section one, uh, the, uh, the rear lots of these properties are interspersed with, uh, paper streets again. Um, records indicate that there are several owners of the land. Again, there are multiple properties with multiple owners. Um, the land values in this section range from one hundred to about seventy-three thousand, indicating a significant underutilization on some of the properties. The thumb rule usually is the improved assessed value divided by the land value should be greater than one, um, to kind of give you a ballpark of whether the property is underutilized or not. Um, the lots, like I said, have a wide range, um, which we estimate is maybe because of the, uh, you know, the existing, uh, environmental constraints on the site. However, some of the properties are, do have higher dollar value. That may be again because of its zone, because of its frontage along, uh, um, accessway and so on and so forth. Uh, much of the lands in this section, generally those properties closer to interchange and private access air driveway do not appear to be encumbered with wetland or hazard, flood hazard area, and they could be developed, uh, with commercial uses. Um, twenty-nine of these properties are located in the smart growth area. Four are in partial smart growth area. Smart growth areas are again designated by the state planning areas. We, it is our opinion that, uh, this may qualify under non-condemnation area in need of redev- redevelopment under, uh, criteria C, which is again unimproved vacant land for period of more than ten years. Criteria E, which is a stagnant and unproductive and underutilized land. And criteria H, which is the smart growth area, which is basically, um, you know, kind of, uh, the planning, uh, area is, uh, recommending that this, uh, area be, um, looked at for, uh, future development uh, because of its close proximity to the lands that is designated under sewer service area. Um, areas that are, uh, that have lack of environmental constraints on them and because of its access or because of its frontage along, um, the, um, highways. Now we come to the last section, which is the section three. Uh, this is the southernmost section. Um. This is. This starts on page thirty-nine. I made it in the, the last section. I gave you the page number. So, um. Alright, so this area is basically east of Route fifty-five. It's about hundred acres. Uh, land in this section is mostly vacant as per the tax records. However, as we've seen, some of it appears to be agricultural farmlands. It has been recently, uh, been used as that. Um, D E P records also indicate that easternmost portion, which is that big property that is owned by the township, is encumbered by wetlands. Uh, there are two sections within this, um, um, within this section that are currently developed. And I'm pointing to the area, it's mostly block four-seven-two-four, that do have some kind of development which ranges from single families to a commercial, uh, development on the property. Uh, the rest of the section is a mix of vacant wooded lands and agricultural fields. Uh, study area consists of, uh, uh, you know, again, numerous, uh, paper streets leaving most of the properties that are in the interior of the property with no direct access to street frontage. Uh, with the exception of just few lots, most of the properties are owned by one entity. Uh, the developed properties, block four-seven-two-four and four-seven-two-five are individually privately owned. Um, review of, uh, recent development records did indicate in two thousand and six, um, the, uh, majority of the portion of this property, about forty-seven acres, uh, was part of a, uh, approval by the zoning board of adjustment uh, to permit the lands to be developed as an office and warehouse facility. Uh, that would consist of multiple buildings. It was about four, four hundred thousand square feet of approval that was given. Uh, however, till date, there have been no improvements to, uh, even though that was approved by the zoning board of adjustment. Uh, the copy of these resolutions and everything are in, uh, part of the appendices of these report. Um, outside of that agricultural field, uh, the, uh, woodlands, uh, that are, you know, the big property that's across from Malaga Lake, there are two blocks within this section that are developed that I indicated, the block fours, four-seven-two-four and four-seven-two-five. Four-seven-two-four is currently developed with a single family, uh, which appears to be in good condition. Uh, there is no records of any code violations that are from this property. Four-seven-two-four lot four is also similarly developed with a single-family home. Um, the home appears to be in good condition, um, and, um, lot five, again, going down the, um, list, is currently developed with a single-story commercial garage building. Um, it indicates, uh, it's a business and commercial vehicles on the properties are, um, were located when we drove by the property. Um, the frontage of the property is mostly paved. Um, again, it's in, uh, good condition. Behind this property, which, um, the commercial property, uh, that you can, uh, see on your, um, on your report, uh, it basically said that lot nine is developed with a commu- communication tab, ever, tower. However, our review of the tax records, alwa- as well as tax map indicate that that's actually lot seven and not lot nine, which is currently does have a communication tower, which was also part of the variance that was granted, I believe, back in two thousand and eight to allow its construction. Um, the last property, again, four-seven-two-five, lot three, uh, this is also developed as a single family. The property during our site visit, we did not had, uh, some, um, um, you know, um, several large trucks that were parked on the property, uh, that seemed to be, appeared to be not in a working condition. However, our review of the code violations haven't indicated any have been awarded to this site. Um, lastly, um. So with the exception of those properties that I spoke about, block four-seven-two-four and four-seven-two-five, rest of the property is, rest of the property in section three is mostly vacant. Uh, the improve.
Can I ask a question? Can I stop?
Sure, yeah.
Four-eight-one-four, four-eight-oh-five.
Hmm.
Why were they chosen? They're on the other side of forty?
So, uh, they were included in the, um, governing body resolution. Uh, they are township-owned properties that are currently vacant and, uh, they were included to be studied as part of this section three area.
Okay. There was, there was no reason for access or?
So the way, um, in the, uh, the local redevelopment housing law works is the township committee decides the properties to be studied.
Okay.
And, uh, it's via resolution, they provide that and then, um, the planning board basically reviews and authorizes a professional planner to study the properties. You're welcome.
I got a question.
Sure.
Can we explain, like, if we have a property owner that has a single-family home in this, um, redevelopment?
Hmm.
How does that affect them?
So, again, currently at this stage, uh, it's only about designation, designating the property as an area in need of redevelopment. But. But. Yeah, but it's a non-condemnation. Sure, but it's a non-condemnation study. So that means, you know, nobody can ask you to leave tomorrow just because the property has been designated.
They can never ask you to leave.
They can never ask you to leave. But what it does is you have basically a, um, a platform for this becoming part of a redevelopment plan, which, you know, if, uh, um, you know, if it is something that can be created with your property and it does give a single-family homeowner different opportunities if they wish to, again, foresee. Again, it's not a taking, it's only after their authorization that they want to be included part of the redevelopment plan and, uh, you know, be relocated. And that is all worked out once they agree to do something like that.
I would, um, you know, looking, looking at the plan and what Joe says, and the fact that that, that single lot is in, in a non-condemnation area, I just really don't like it. It just. I just really don't like it. I just feel that it would be one method to bring emergency vehicles down Route forty and, and through Route forty, then to, to bring them through the township and Leonard Cake Road and have the um, trucks and stuff exiting um, into the residential area of Franklin Township. Especially if it's not a condemnation, because we're going to present something that might not ever happen.
So, okay, I think um, Mr. Rancin was talking about section three.
True to the problem.
Yeah.
I believe it's hard.
Talking about the section one. Yeah, yeah.
And Steve is referring to the whole of the south.
Yeah, yeah. So going back to Ms., uh, Mr. John's um, question, uh, again, just by if the township committee is designating the property, it is not coming in to say, that's it, that's how the plan is going to be done. It is a non-condemnation designation. But what it's giving is, it's giving the committee the choice to develop a redevelopment plan that would actually be viable, economically doable, and somebody would be interested in coming and developing it. If, again, all the parties are agreeing to it. What that property would give is currently the way it has been developed, it is blocking a paper street, which does belong to the township. There is no, it is supposed to be a paper street that goes directly to Leonard Cake. It is not doing that because of that lot has, have been developed and almost ragling onto the adjacent paper street. So what this is going to do is uh, give uh, the township itself a, um, you know, and the stakeholders who would be involved, including the property owner, to come to the table and actually work on a plan that would uh, probably work for the entire township.
The only problem with that is that we're really a developer down a, down a road that we probably don't want them to deal with. Because then you're saying that.
So that's when.
The opportunity to someone to put an access vote on the Leonard Cake.
But that's when the redevelopment plan is actually controlled by the township.
Hope. Why?
Thank you.
Two thousand accidents in. My daughter lives down the street.
Understood, understood. And again, like, it's, it's.
Given that opportunity, like Jill said, if we took that out, besides if you look at that, instead, two thirds of that fossil weapons.
Township committee could exclude anything from this.
I was just getting to that, yeah. So again, this is a study, and the township committee could decide to remove that. And the wetlands being there, again, that is when the state umbrella comes on picture. That's something nobody, no planner, no engineer, no developer can, you know, evade. So if the wetlands are there, the restrictions are going to be there, and NJDP is going to come into play. And the other portion of it is why to include that property. Uh, it's a decision that can be made by the township committee, but right now what it does is how we would control if that property was included and that becomes a secondary access. Your redevelopment plan, which is going to be drafted by the township committee and reviewed by the planning board in similar setting, in public hearing, and be voted on. So, you know, it is, it is not something that will not be contemplated. You would have equal say in what happens or what doesn't happen. You can also, you know, even if that property is included, and I'm just very hypothetically saying, that could just be, you know, a buffer area. But it's all part of the redevelopment plan that would happen, again.
Okay, Mika, I, I need to go to legal now.
Sure.
Uh, if I understand this correctly, to have the best of both worlds, we have, we have the ability, or the, the property on the north side, Leonard Cake Road, we have the ability to exclude that if this plan was to move forward. We have the ability to remove that at, at this level, submit it to the township committee. Township committee can either accept that removal or put it back in, but we have the authority to do, to adjust the plan before moving it forward and take that piece that's on Leonard Cake Road off an area.
Correct. You can, you can say some of this area should be designated, none of it can be designated, or you can actually pick and choose.
Pick and choose the lots. Okay, alright, very good. Okay. This evening or later day?
No. As part of your action.
This evening. If, if the plan was moved forward.
Yes.
Okay. We, we can move, when you say we can move harder the plan forward, that's what we're talking about. We can exclude this piece of property or that piece of property this evening forward to the township committee. And then the reality in the statute is the township committee can accept all of that or none of that and ma- make the changes at their level.
Correct.
Okay, very good. Mika, I want to go, and it might be, well, yeah, let's go.
Part of the recommendation would be either all of it, some of it, or none of it. Correct.
Alright, got it. The other two properties we were talking to about in the south, con- non-condemn-?
Condemnation.
Yeah, okay. The, I, I have that easily. The property value with, with my assumption that property owner has the best of both worlds. They continue to live there forever. Uh, but their property, because it's now in a redevelopment area, the value of their property would increase, but their taxes would still stay the same as a, as a resident at that point in time?
Um, I would not answer the tax question, but yes, I mean, essentially the property can be under a redevelopment plan when it's constructed.
Would do increase the value.
Which would, yes, which would become, because the redevelopment plan is going to be prepared to, you know, kind of attract development. So it is going to be something that is going to improve the land value of this property, the surrounding area, and so on and so forth.
Value of the improvement would maintain the same, which would keep the tax rate the same?
Again, and the fact that.
Unprofessional, uh.
Yeah. I am not a tax attorney, so I cannot, uh, you know, put on record whether this or that would happen. But yes, uh, what, in my experience, when the redevelopment plan has uh, designated and has occurred, uh, especially uh, for properties that is within the redevelopment plan and even surrounding properties, they have benefited with the designation.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have questions? Well, I have three sections.
I have uh, another question. Go back to the property on, uh, that has frontage on Leonard Cake Road.
Sure.
Now it says western access to section one, which will be uh, from Portstown Road, uh, is unlikely because it's impacted by wetlands. But access to the study area one from Leonard Cake Road would access through the exact same wetlands. So why is it encumbered by wetlands from the west, but not encumbered from the north by wetlands? When it's going through the same exact wetlands over the same streams?
So part of the reason for making that, uh, you know, assumption was also that you have to remember that that lot eleven is developed. So when a LOI would be done or reviewed, um, you know, uh, the, the location of whatever is already improved and impacted the wetland there would be considered already, uh, you know, impacted and can be carved out as being accessible area. While along Route forty, the wetlands are, have remained untouched. That area hasn't been improved by any kind of improvement. So getting a workaround that from DEP would be rather tedious uh, than getting something that has already been improved. So, uh, Chairman, if I can just.
Yes.
Finish the whole thing and then, uh, if, if, if I may. So just wrapping it up, uh, overall, uh, we believe all of this section, section one, section two, section three can be designated as a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment based on the criteria that I provided in the testimony, uh, which are criteria C, D, E, H, and part of it as section three. Um, again, the, the report has been, uh, has provides more in detail. I'm just giving you a synopsis of what the report contains, and uh, and this would be my opinion that the uh, the planning board consider designation or recommending designation of these properties. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, let's go with question before we leave the public. Is there any other questions, comments, uh?
I just have a question. So in the event that, um, we do exclude it as the planning board.
Mm-hmm.
So say we exclude the forty-three oh-one-eleven.
Mm-hmm.
Township committee has a right to put it back in there?
Yes. We can, we can reject it. Ju- just so we're clear, we can reject the entire plan and the township committee can still approve it.
Okay.
Michael, help me out here.
Yes, your, it's a recommendation. Should we follow it or not?
Alright. Chair.
If that's the case, why are we here?
Because we, we are tasked, we are tasked to, the planning board needs to be a part of the solution. We are tasked to generate the report and forward to township committee. Township committee can accept it in whole or in part, or not, and, and I bring it up, or not at all. Uh, but the, the township committee, to meet the statute, the planning board needs to gen- have the report generated and that's, and, and also hold a public hearing, and, and that's what we're in the midst of doing. I, I just bring back, I, I bring back the options of uh, what could occur. So it's, it's out there already open for everybody, uh, in transparency.
Um, and. Reading this study area, I, I actually disagree with that because it says upon receipt of a recommendation from the planning board, the township committee may act to adopt the resolution designated the area in question. Now there's another section that says, once it is, once the planning board does recommend it and ordinance is adopted by township committee, then it comes back to the planning board for approval. And at that point, if the planning board does not approve it, then township committee can still overrule the planning board. But at the stage that it's at right now, it says upon receipt of recommendation, the planning board, the township committee may act to adopt the resolution. Am I misunderstanding that?
Uh, no, it says that after receiving the recommendation of the planning board, municipal governing body may adopt the resolution determining that the delineated area or any part thereof.
So if they do not receive our recommendation, then they cannot act upon it?
It's up to where I read it.
Okay.
Well, I just.
Do you assume the planning board would just do, not make a determination related to it?
Well, I'm, I'm just reading it because plain as the words break from the page. Upon receipt of recommendation, the planning board, from the planning board, township committee may act. Now there is another part further down the line, when they come back for a plan, they can overrule us if they don't like our recommendations. But in this part of the process, it, it's written plainly to me, as I understand it, that our recommendation is required for township committee to act.
Our recommendation is required as part of the process, it's step one in the process.
Correct.
However, the recommendation that the planning board makes does not have to be followed, it can be modified by the, by township committee at that stage. Because it's, if you see that section B says, they may determine that the delineated area or any part thereof is the redevelopment area. So they're still allowed to do a part thereof the same way the, the planning board is able to do a part thereof. That phrases in both sections for the planning board.
Exactly. We can take part of it, some of it, all of it or part of it, and then the township committee can do the same thing when the report that, which is basically overriding, uh, if we remove something, is the way I'm reading it.
And then, John, what you're looking at down the road is, if the redevelopment plan is prepared, they do have to refer back to us again. And that's when we have the forty-five days to respond. We're not responding to that.
Now, what I, there's a section at the very end of this, as a completion of the process, like, for completion of the process, it says township committee may still adopt the redevelopment plan, even if the planning board determines it's not consistent. But this isn't the, that's the redevelopment plan.
That's the second.
I understand.
The second part of the app.
That's the other section.
Sorry, I misunderstood that. I just wanted to.
Yeah, a lot of people jump to the forty-five day section, but it doesn't apply to this stuff.
I did it earlier.
You did it earlier.
I did it earlier.
And going back to Mr. Joe's question as to why we're here. Sorry. Um, you know, as to why we are here and why we are listening to this, again, uh, you as a planning board have to look at these properties and determine whether they meet the criteria to be designated. And that's your recommendation to the governing body.
So like, you're gonna need that it doesn't, the township committee just hold.
Yes.
But there is, for our input, which is part of the process.
Because again, a public hearing has to be held where the public can come and provide their questions and answers.
Here, is everybody good down here? Good? Everybody good down here?
Wait, I just, I'm still stuck on the, uh, block forty-three lot eleven, and if I look at page fifty-six, it does say that these themselves do not meet any of the substantive, substantive criteria necessary for redevelopment designation. And why are they on the list?
So that section three is that section that I was talking about where, uh, the property itself may not meet, you know, like a obsolete, uh, like a dilapidated building or vacant land. But over here, we did say it meets criteria D, where it's a faulty arrangement. Uh, the section three is also, it can meet because it is, you know, i- it is an essential part, and that's what, that's the argument we are making over here.
But if we put it in there as a township, saying it's in part of that redevelopment plan, and if homeowners are here, I apologize, they decide, okay, they're offering me whatever amount of money to change it over. Everybody else on Leonard Cake and I own a lake are then screwed because they decided to take the money and run.
Yep.
Days, yep.
Well, I, I mean, I don't know how to technically answer about this group, but the, the, the question.
Like tax questions.
Exactly. But she has to say that.
It's the, 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 the rede-, that, that area, again, if the owner wants to be part of the redevelopment plan, he or she can be included in that. But the redevelopment plan can restrict as to what type of development should occur on that lot or not.
Okay.
Basically, you say it has to be criteria, but that's really truly your opinion.
Yeah, as a professional planner, yep.
I could find another planner has a different opinion.
Sure.
So I'm just saying that, look, what you're saying.
Heather, you okay now? Everybody good? Alright. Alright, here we go. Michael, is there anything else we need to do before we leave the public?
No, we're the public, uh, we don't need to swear everybody in, it's not a, you're going to have an application, they would speak. Name and address and, uh.
Yep, I gotta show a card right now. Alright, before we open this to the public, uh, this eve- for this me- meeting, I asked, I asked that you state your name and address before speaking. And if there's any expert witnesses, they're not need to be sworn in, uh, residents speaking do not have to be sworn in. The five-minute rule will apply this evening for all speakers. We'll be flexible, but we also have a room full of people, so we want to get everybody, uh, up here to get out, uh, to get out their comments, please. Uh, there has been many comments on social media, media, and our objective is to provide you with accurate information from the professionals. And if there's any questions, to have them answered. I assure you that this board will treat you with, uh, respect by all board members, and I ask you to respect the board as well. In the end, we're all neighbors in this community, and we want the best for our town. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to open it to the public. I have a motion.
Second.
Moving second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're, we're open to the public.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Because no one was given notice if they live within two hundred feet, and it wasn't the law that we had to notice them. And because we have many members of the community who don't live within two hundred feet of, say, with parcels or sections, I ask this committee if we can be more lenient to a speaker if they live within the two hundred feet with their five-minute allocation of time.
I'll be more lenient to everyone as long as they're on message. Uh, we don't need to rehash the same thing over and over again. As long as they're on message, I will not only give the people within two hundred feet, uh, leniency, I'll also give it to everyone at, at this point. But we, we also have a room full of people, so we need to move on. Okay.
Nora Craig, forty-four, forty-eight Coles Mill Road, uh, for the township committee, forgot to say it, thank you very much
Yeah.
for your work and your efforts
Thank you.
in doing this plan. And her quote, company was charged to do this area. She was handed those blocks and said, and told, can this be called a redevelopment zone based upon the specs in the state statutes? Is that correct? You didn't make it up. You didn't make up these things here.
The criteria is no.
No. Okay, so, don't shoot the messenger, because some people were shooting the messenger. Secondly, uh, not on topic, Ms. Flem, being a township Flem, committee, uh, person, uh, and the only female up there, you better get this board gender balanced, because let me tell you.
Nora, I don't do the appointments.
Uh-uh.
There was a time that I did, but I don't do the.
I'm saying, I'm just saying, I just seen this face coming in here and went. Now, you can do whatever you choose to do associated with this plan. You can say, you know what, we haven't done our due diligence. You can say, you know what, we haven't done our due diligence. We haven't done our due diligence in ensuring enough of the community knows what's going on. We haven't done our due diligence in understanding exactly how the wetlands would or would not be impacted by having commercial construction outside those wetland zones, but close to them. And there's other things. Now, I just picked this up and started looking at it. I read your report, very nicely done, thank you. And I still have a lot of questions. So you can say at this meeting, we're going to listen to all these people out here, and then we're going to table the decision until the next planning board meeting, so that we can contemplate and think about this, and look at these maps a little further. Now, if you had done this in July, I would be up here saying the same thing. But the fact that you're doing it at the end of December around Christmas and New Year's, when the board's going to change, township committee's going to change, I don't think this is a decision or a recommendation that this board should make at this time. There is no rush. There's no rush.
The only comment I have, Nora, is the third, I look at social media as a lot of other people do. There was no planning of this meeting on a week of Christmas. I have a lot of stuff to do for Christmas. Our meeting is always, always, for 20-plus years, been on a third Tuesday at a time.
I know where your meetings are. I'm not saying you change your meeting.
Pretty perception.
I'm saying we're at the end of the year, when the boards change and the township committees change, you're going to have some new faces on, in both bodies, right? And township people aren't paying attention to what's going on that much around the holidays, in general. And there is no rush to send this back to township committee now, at this meeting, because they still have to do their reorganization and seat their new members. And they're going to have to come up to speed in studying it at the same thing. So you have a lot of people here to talk, you're going to have a lot of things to consider, and I don't think you are going to have enough information coming out of this meeting at this time, where you have done, from my point of spec, point of opinion, your due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora.
Thank you, Nora.
Hi, good evening. My name's Chris Sayers, I live at 184 Malaga Lake Boulevard. I was at the township committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I just heard about it, so I didn't really do my homework, but now I've done my homework, and now I've made... So I just have...
The mayor got it passed.
So I just, I just have a few notes here, I'll try not to be too boring, but... So our township's master plan says to encourage the preservation of the remaining Malaga Village area, which I know is just like a mile down the street. I know this is in zone Malaga Village, but it's all Malaga. It also says that we should retain the rural character of the community and strengthen ordinances that enhance that character. It also notes that development in this, in our township is hampered because drinking water relies on aquifer recharge areas. Pollution from runoff threatens water quality, and we face serious, this is the master plan, this is quoted verbatim, we face serious risks to groundwater contamination because of our reliance of onsite septic systems on small lot sizes. The area that you want to redevelop is next to a wetland, and is comprised of over, of approximately 380 acres of forested area. Forests, again, which the master plan says we should protect from encroaching development. So my question is, why are we even considering this redevelopment if it goes against practically everything that's already in our master plan?
Chris, I can answer that question for you. The master plan of 2004, and actually, that was the first year I got on the planning board. The master plan encompasses all 56 square miles of the township.
Yes.
So the statement that you said is absolutely correct. It covers, it takes in all 56 square miles. Of those 56 square miles, 2% of the township is commercial property. Of that 2%, approximately 0.2% of that is interchange commercial. So back in 2004, in the master plan, this area was identified, because of 5540, was identified as the interchange commercial area. So if you were going to develop an area, this is the area that was developed. Your statements were absolutely correct, and, but it also encompassed all 56 square miles of the township. And going back to 04, 03, 04, 05, when the master plan was developed at that time, that's the reason, you know, you're asking why this area?
Yeah.
Because this area's been identified as a...
Sacrificial land.
Interchange... Sacrifice, okay, that's one way of looking at it, but Route 40, Route 55...
But just, just to the residents who live here, I mean, you know, I understand that. And I know that there's this whole smart growth, and there's all these key words that we have to do. But I mean, with smart growth, I just may finish, like, you know, and then feel free to, to answer, you know. Like, you know, this is, and I understand, like, the reason that, or the so-called reason that we're trying to do this is to bring in tax revenue for the town, to lower our tax burden as property taxpayers. But I don't, I don't think it's going to lower our taxes. I think our taxes are going to increase because of, I mean, one glaring thing is the New Jersey Supreme Court's Mount Laurel decision, which requires that every township designate a certain area for low-income housing. And the only reason that this township hasn't been able to do that is because we do not have sewer. Now, in this plan that was, that was provided, this area is designated as a sewer area, where sewers could be built, and probably would need to be with wetlands and everything else. This means, and I was looking at, Malaga also has quite a few zones that, because of a recent court case, Franklin Township had to, I think it was a 2015 document, I'm not sure. Franklin Township had to designate certain areas that we would allow low-income housing. And that's, again, in Malaga, off of, off of Delsey Drive and 40 in Malaga Village. So when they start building this area, and they'll probably have to build sewers, they'll probably have to increase road sizes, which, again, in New Jersey, I think a mile of new road costs over a million dollars.
That's correct.
Exactly. So I just don't see how this is like, okay, yeah, this will bring tax revenue, a pilot payment tax revenue, which will actually be less than property taxes. I've heard that our township will get more of a percentage of that tax revenue, but again, it's a lower tax, property tax revenue that we would have done. It's okay, so I'm sorry. So it's going to lead to warehouse development, but it's also going to lead to townhomes, causing us to spend more money on infrastructure, services, and place pressures on our already overburdened school system. Like every overdeveloped town around us, our town, our taxes will go up. Our taxes are low because we are rural. This would only, this, this, all this would do would be to cut off our nose to spite our face, in my humble opinion. And I mean, I'm not against change, I'm not against bringing in property taxes, but I'm against this, because we have the power to not only keep being a great town, but we have the power to set it up for even a brighter future. Free of problems that plague our neighboring communities, sorry, for our quality of life and for my children's lives who live right off of Oak Road, I would humbly ask you to please reject this plan. I just, yeah, for, for tax reasons, for environmental reasons, for a whole host of reasons. I would just, I would beg that you would reject this plan. So thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Thanks, David Joe.
Jean...
Dennis, Dennis and Jean Mangini, 12 Leonard Cake Road. We're the property owners that have the faulty house on Birdback Lot.
We are the ones that are behind the Mexican restaurant that's across from Iona Lake, and yes, we're that one piece of property. We lived on the property, which the redevelopment study on page 19 is referring to, as an obsolete layout and faulty arrangement. On that page, they're stating our lot is an adjacent property right-of-way, prohibiting the linking of interchange commercial zone to Leonard Cake Road, which will prohibit the development of the commercially-sown area due to lack of access. It also states that our house is possibly encroaching into a right-of-way located on the wrong property. We lived in this home for 48 years. In August 1974, my husband and I purchased this property. Our driveway's located on Leonard Cake Road. The property was surveyed by Hahn and Hahn when the ground was purchased with an existing house on it. Then again, surveyed by Ewing Associates when our house was built. Both properties showed that, both surveys showed that the property is 74.55 feet from the center of Porch Town Road to our driveway. Neither survey ever showed that block 4301, lot 11 existed. In 1974, Franklin Township issued us a permit to build our home. The home got inspected, and Franklin Township issued us a certificate of occupancy. In 1988, we applied to Franklin Township for a permit to have a building pool installed. The township issued all necessary permits, and everything was inspected and passed. Then again, in 2001, we applied that permit for an addition build on our home. That was, again, was inspected and approved by Franklin Township. Up until today, our home has never been moved. It's remained in the same place since 1974. According to this study, our home and swimming pool are not on our property. However, we've been paying taxes on our property... No, the study did. But we've been paying taxes on this property for 48 years. If there was a survey problem found on the master tax maps, when did it happen? Sometime between 2001, when the last permit was issued and approved by Franklin Township. Because in this study, someone moved our neighbors and our property lines 114 feet to the east towards Little East Street. That created a problem that made our here, house appear to be on an incorrect property. My neighbors, Nora, I've never been notified of any changes being made to these tax maps. Now, the tax maps show that Victor Roan owns a piece of vacant property with 114 foot of frontage on Leonard Cake Road. It's just a coincidence that my neighbors' homes and ours are all now considered a faulty layout due to moving them off of property lines 114 feet to the east. The township even assigned this brand-new piece of vacant land, block 4301, lot 11, 1.9 acres, with an assessed land value of $13,400, and a house number, 6 Leonard Cake Road. This lot does not exist. To my knowledge, there's never been a survey done on this property. I would like to know when this 4301, lot 11, was inserted into the tax maps. Our property has always been shown on the tax map as the first lot on the west end corner of Leonard Cake Road. Our property's surrounded with swamp and wetlands, but this redevelopment study wants to build a road through our property so they can have a right-of-way on Leonard Cake Road. There's no way to connect, connect the proposed development by Route 55 and Route 40 to Leonard Cake Road without going directly through wetlands of vernal habitat. On page 23, the study states, given that this property provides access to Leonard Cake Road, its inclusion in a redevelopment area may be necessary to properly effectuate the redevelopment, the area as a whole. The Route 40 frontage is also limited due to the presence of wetlands over much of the western portions of the frontage. So at some time during this study, block 4301, lot 11 conveniently showed up on Leonard Cake Road so that there would be necessary frontage needed. My family's made Franklinville our home, and we plan on remaining here. This study stated, and I quote, "The use of eminent domain by the township to acquire any or all properties within the study area shall not be permitted." But then it goes on to leave our home as a faulty arrangement and an obsolete layout, which seems to me to be another fancy way of implementing eminent domain where we've lived for 48 years. Thank you for hearing me out. It's just unreal, that's so...
I'm short.
Dennis, 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 you know, on that app... My sink is leaking. On that app, on that, like, please.
Find itself, you know, on the land that you defined.
I went to the county map. What's that?
The app. It does not show you owning the property either, because me and Joe were like, Dennis lives there.
It was, our property lines moved, we don't know when.
We have two surveys.
Yeah, but when we bought our property in '74, it showed our, our right-of-way, 15 feet. And to the left of our 15 feet, it shows 74.55 to the center of Porch Town Road.
But when you go on the app and it show like physically where you're going to be at, what the app...
Uh-oh.
It's a different name.
Because, because it's all been moved.
Because somebody moved property lines.
It's been moved on the county maps. It, it's only on paper, because if you look at our property, there is not any room between our street and to put this 114 feet in.
Do you want to be on this? Do you want to be in this, that's a designated area?
I don't, I want, I want to keep my property the way it is.
You don't want to be in this?
Nope.
That's our home.
I want to keep it as it is, but I do want to find out how that lot got inserted in its tax maps. From the time we bought our house, from the time of our last addition, 2001, till now, this property appeared on the map, and it has a title, has an address. It didn't have that when we bought our land, and if it had it in 2001, I don't think we would have got a permit to put addition on our house if we didn't own the land. And it was also, we had all the permits to do it.
I would put much more trust in your survey than, than a tax map, I really would.
I do, too.
Their survey is going out, and they're, they're actually going, they're looking for the corners.
There's, there's, there's three concrete markers on the corners.
When you built the house, you probably got title insurance or...
We do have title insurance.
Yes, we do have that.
I wouldn't worry.
It's easy for you to say that, it's not your house. It's our house. But I appreciate it.
And you have a different name on that hunting map.
Does it say Roan owned it? Anything else, or?
We're good, Dennis.
I appreciate it, thank you.
I would just like you to check out 4301, block 11, because I really do not believe it exists.
Rose, when you get a little bit of time, would you please try to, without covering calls and engineers and all that, could you just investigate that internally and, and see if we can get some... My position's still the same about any property actually owned on Township Road. That, that's not, I don't change that. That won't change it, but maybe if we can help the resident out a little bit, we're trying to get some clarity.
Could you also find a year when that became a lot? I can't find when it was purchased or nothing on that lot. It shows nothing.
Dennis, you got a tax, you got a tax bill, right? Okay, let's, let's move on, we got a lot of people. Good evening.
Hi, I'm short, I don't know how to... Can you hear me okay?
I was never accused of being that.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you're fine.
Okay. My name is Susan Champion, and we live at 630 Reed Avenue, Franklinville. I'm here because I'm really, really concerned. First of all, we don't know yet exactly what's going on that property, is that correct?
That is correct.
Right?
There's two functions, or there's actually several functions. It's identifying the area as redevelopment. There is no plan, there is no project that was submitted. This is whether or not the area should be identified as a redevelopment, redevelopment area, and the bulk of the property, as I had talked, said to Chris earlier, is in the highway commercial, I mean interchange commercial zone. So that's where the master plan identified development. But there's two different things, with a redevelopment plan and an application. There is no application for anything at this time. It may not ever be, but there's no, there's two totally different pieces here we're talking about.
But it is supposed to be an industrial park, correct?
The area itself, in, I'm going to let the zoning officer get the terminology right. The area itself is identified as interchange commercial. In interchange commercial, you can have...
You can have certain uses under the zoning, and some are industrial.
Okay, so...
The uses are auto mobilizations, restaurants, hotels, bars, pubs, hotels, government buildings...
What about trucking?
Now, truck, well, truck stops are explicitly prohibited, as well as warehousing is explicitly prohibited.
Busting?
I see that.
Busting?
Busting? That would be public utilities, mass transit stations, that is permitted, yes, as it stands now. So the business that owns this land now could put in a mass transit station.
Okay.
Basically, if they followed all the rules.
This really scares me, because if you're going to make it an industrial park, and right now you don't know what it's going to be, or consist of, I should say... now you don't know what it's going to be, or consist of, I should say. When you have an industrial park, sooner or later, it's all nice and wonderful and being sold nicely, you did a nice job, you really did, um, being sold nicely. But in time, everybody forgets. Things get worse, noise gets worse. Right now, on Reed Avenue, we hear traffic all night long going by. And it's, and, and that's on 55, it's on Porch Town, it's Malika, you hear it all. I love my home. We bought our home in 98. And the other thing that really is upsetting to me, whatever goes in here, is that going to pollute our lakes? Because we live right on a lake. We bought that house because it was on a lake. And it's a beautiful lake, you see the swans, you see the, you see all kinds of birds, you see herons, you see them all. We love that. We don't want to lose it. And it really makes me upset, as you can tell, because I, we don't want to lose it. And I really feel that the people that live in this area, the majority of the people do not want this. They don't want it at all because they know what it can bring to our area. We like our nice, quiet, content, well, quiet as can be, content little area. And we like it the way it is. We don't want it changed. And that's why we were in Franklinville, but this, but like I told you, we wanted the lake, we saw the house, and we bought it. We don't regret that, please don't make us regret it. Thank you.
Good evening, uh, my name is, uh, John Dressendorfer, that's my wife, Mary Dressendorfer. Uh, we are the owners, uh, next to Dennis and Jean. Uh, for all intents and purposes, we're a lot, we're in Block 4301. Uh, we're, just, my comments are going to be some of affirmation and education and a couple of just comment as a homeowner there. 4301, Lot 11, I guess is that Dennis's house doesn't exist on, is built directly next to mine. Except I'm a little predating Dennis. My family moved there in about, I think it was 1968. So I was the kid in his house before it was built. The, uh, if you look at, on page 19, you got a satellite view on, in 19 in the report, uh, you have a satellite view of our lots next to each other with superimposed lot lines on top. Uh, you're going to see Dennis's, well, the empty lot, supposedly Lot 11, and, uh, next to it, you're going to see Lot 3, uh, Lot 2 and Lot 1. Lot 2 and Lot 1 are actually Dennis, Dennis's property and my, Mr. and Mrs. Moskowski's property, superimposed on my lot. So that, uh, you're, you're going to see, uh, what looks like a flag lot, I believe it is Lot, um, Lot 1, that's actually Dennis's lot out of proportion. So it's, it's not, it's the same mechanics, but it's out of proportion, it's too wide, it's not, you know, it doesn't, doesn't, doesn't represent what's actually there. So that gives me a little bit of concern because if you, if you Googled my address, 32 Leonard Cake Road, it puts you out in the middle of my woods. I have about roughly an average, about six acres of that, with 781 feet of frontage along Leonard Cake Road. But the address number 20 is my neighbor's Moskowski. And that, that number 20 address is directly on top of my home. So it's very easy to see, there's a lot of confusion. But like Dennis had said before me, I have a survey, it looks, it looks exactly what a survey did in 1968. The, the markers are there, everything's there, even though Little East Stream is in my survey, because Little East Stream, part of the wetlands, is actually my property line. And it has never moved through all the storms and everything since I've been there. Um, the documents that I'm seeing, uh, I actually have a document, um, first, there's a question, uh, is there any, um, supplemental tax maps exist for this area? Because I have an older tax map that actually, um, shows about a 10-degree turn for that entire acre project that would be in your page, section 1. This entire lot, this entire project was pivoted about 10 degrees because to, to make the road lines be parallel with Leonard Cake Road. They were not parallel, they were actually probably to the south. They pointed to the south. At some point, they were pointed more north to line up. And Dennis, his, he got an access permit to have a, a right-of-way. And one of these roads that lines up now perfectly with Lot 11, never lined up before. So that paper road dead-ended at Dennis's driveway. So that paper road never existed as a straight parallel road going straight across streams. It just stopped because none of the property lines lined up. But for sometime before 2005, I couldn't tell you when, that whole entire property went 10 degrees one way or the other, it might be 7 degrees. Um, so I'm, I'm wondering if there's any supplemental tax maps. So I have a copy, but I don't know what you guys were shown or what the development was given to make this study. So I have, and, and my, uh, survey shows exactly the five and a quarter acre, or, or six, six and a quarter acres outlined perfectly.
What I, what I actually would like you to do, um, John, is to provide, uh, get with Rose in the zoning office, because I want to, she's going to look into Dennis's issue with the property lines, and this may help her answer, uh, what occurred, uh, with those property lines.
Okay, no problem.
All right.
Um, I haven't, just a, just a couple of educational things. Uh, the roadway, that's Porch Town Road that, that, I'll show the, the, the audience first, that, uh, is the frontage of that lake right here is actually a dam. Okay, so that needs to be maintained as such and, and, uh, you know, actually was breached at one point. Uh, that was a mess.
I was there that day.
That was a mess, yeah.
I'm well aware of it and it's probably, I haven't lost that memory and that was one of the reasons I asked, uh, keeping aim, development traffic off of the local roads.
And in, in that, and one of the reasons I'm here, I, I, I was, I scoured tons and tons of, of information on the internet, what I could get. Uh, my house is actually depicted twice in the report, uh, as a picture of frontage for Dennis and, uh, Dennis, Dennis's house where he lives and, and the, um, Moskowskis are, I guess there's some, and they're not here.
Oh, oh, oh my God.
So, so they use, they, they're using that picture of my home as the picture of what their home is supposed to be. And it just, very unnerving. Um, and I learned something, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, this town is not incorporated? So this board is superseded by another board but more power? Like, you, like, you have a, like, so you, when you make a decision, there's somebody else that makes a final decision?
Township committee.
The township committee, is that?
Right, township committee.
Okay. So, so you could be overridden?
Yes.
Okay, okay, just wanted to make sure.
My point about, uh, earlier on.
Okay.
All of this, none of this or part of this can be overruled, uh, when it goes to the township committee. Our, our job is to facilitate a report.
Okay.
And forward to the township committee for decision. And part of that is to hold a public hearing, which is what we're doing.
Okay. Um, a couple of things on a professional level, I, believe me, I'm a two-finger typer and I have horrible handwriting. Um, that a lot of, in that report, there's pages that are not numbered. So it's a 189-page report, it's not numbered. So is it an official report? I'd like to see something that's numbered that would be, okay, we could talk about this page or that page or this page.
I'm sorry, are you referring to the appendices?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm referring to everything that's after page 53 or something like that.
Yeah, tho, those are the appendices documents, so we can't, you know, kind of talk to that, that's like the tax record and the resolution.
458, first 58.
Yeah, is what we've written.
Right.
You're supporting documents or the appendix.
Okay.
It's not numbered.
Okay, um, and there's, uh, there's, uh, resolutions in there that it's not signed. There's a resolution, and there's one resolution that's signed, and there's another resolution in there that's not signed.
Well, you, the attorney of that, uh, the attorney who was here in 2006 can, can assure you that those documents on that bad land were signed at some point. I realize the co, the copy you're looking at, uh, that's in the report is not signed. But the gentleman that was here in 2006, uh, and went through that project, uh, Michael, were those resolutions signed?
They were signed because we, uh, had superior court appeals, three appeals, so all this was.
Well, you can understand my concern, you know, you just, you know.
And I'm, I'm.
I've done it with my daughter's term paper, switch pages and, you know, no, she did it right.
No way I'm making you a problem. But I, I just know what he went through.
Okay. Um, and there, uh, what else I have here? I understand this is, uh, uh, somebody's, you know, hard thought-out plan. Actually, I'm in agreement with doing something. But there's two, there's two streams that run through the property, Little East, one's, one is the border of mine, it's actually my property line. And there's another one that, and that runs probably two-thirds of the way down in, in that, uh, first, uh, number, I guess that number, section 1 parcel. You have to put lot and block numbers on lakes. Well, you could take those two streams, dig it out and extend Iona Lake and make a lake community all around that and have tax revenue. And you could keep, you could keep the, the, you're making, you're improving the wetland instead of, you know, eliminate it or backfilling it. So you can dig in between those two Little Easts and make it one big additional lake and improve the dam and probably put a couple hundred houses around there.
And no section.
And, and you had a beautiful.
Killed.
Yeah, you have beautiful lake community and the access somewhere around Lot 11, I'm sure would be more.
The wetlands are protected by state, state and federal regulations and that what you're saying sounds nice on a municipal planning level, but it's impossible to achieve.
Well, the, the reason I say that is twofold. Um, also, in addition to the satellite view, there's some, there's some indications out there, uh, with, on a tax map where Little East has been changed. Uh, it's been moved, uh, I want to say probably 100 feet closer to Iona Lake. And instead of being straight across, so there's a bridge that's not depicted on the, on, on the, on the image, on what's been presented, there's a bridge on Leonard Cake Road. That bridge has a stream going straight through it and it starts the beginning of my property line. If you look on, on the drawlings, that Little East is now 100 feet or so, 150 feet further closer to Iona Lake, and it squiggles like this. And the, and the notations of what you would expect on a tax map is, is not accurate. So, and it's, and, and where you have the tax maps where they butt together is causing a lot of confusion because it's literally right on top of Dennis and Jean's property where the tax map separates. And if you try to squeeze them together, if there was an engineer drawing that married the two accurately, we could have a lot more accurate to talk about, as, as even as homeowners, because that, when you marry the two edges, it's kind of difficult to get a concept of what's actually there.
John, we're going to have, we're going to open the review. Hey, Doug, we're going to move back to the thing in itself. I got, my position on Leonard Cake Road has been stated already, so.
Okay.
You know, the, the whole property line piece of that area up there, um, I want to concentrate on the plan, uh, itself. I, I thank you for your comment and Rose is going to look into that matter.
Appreciate it.
And please provide her with that old tax map, your current, so she can use that as a supporting document in her review.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
I have nothing personal, thank you.
Chairman, if I can just clarify, I mean, when we did the study, we rely on state data and tax records that are presented.
Tax records.
Just because, you know, there were certain words thrown out about being doctor or engineered, we haven't done that. We, we have relied on the state data that is provided.
And I, I understand, yeah, exactly. The documents you, you used, the documents that were provided, uh, at the statements and out of the tax laws, uh, I understand that. If they're wrong, that's, that's a whole nother issue, but, uh, now, I realize you didn't doctor a document.
Just wanted to put that.
Yes, sir. Oh, good evening, Mr. Kennedy.
Good evening, Mr. Petch. Uh, Harry Kennedy, 1578 Frye's Mill Road, Franklinville, New Jersey. And I don't live within 200 feet of the project, although I do go to Iona Lake quite frequently to fish for trout with some muted success. That area of the township is certainly one of the prettiest areas of the entire township. And I go to Malika Lake also quite regularly to fish.
Well, then you get more than five minutes.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Petch. I will, I, I, I don't have the same expertise that most of the people in this room have. But I have served as Freeholder Director, as Mayor of Franklin Township, as Chairman of the Planning Board, as Representative to the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission for the Delaware River Port Authority. And I'm going to quote one of my heroes, a person that succeeded me as the, uh, as the head of the Gloucester County Freeholder Board, a man by the name of John Mayer. He said, "Hired guns." He said, "The nice thing about hired guns is they always shoot in the direction I tell them to." And the hired gun shot in the direction that they were told to. And again, Mr. Petch, I think you raised an excellent point. And the question was, why did it ever go to Leonard Cake Road in the first place? Why? Whose bread was being buttered, if anybody's? Was there a conflict of interest somewhere? Was there a snake in the woodpile? Was there a red herring? Why did it go to Leonard Cake Road? And I'm sure we'll find out at some point in the future, but that's an excellent question. You're looking at 40 and Route 55, and I'm not going to debate the merits of that, we have some of the greatest environmental minds in the township here. I call them gems and they're certainly emerald because they're pure green. And that's Suzanne, and, uh, of course, my good friend who has organized much of this along the way. But the important point to remember is this, that some of the things that I'm sure are hurtful to you, Mr. Petch, as somebody that's been in this business for a long time, as have I, are the questions of whose bread gets buttered by this project. And when you do a redevelopment zone, as you and I both know, one of the key components of wanting a redevelopment zone, and as the mayor knows, because he and I have had this discussion numerous times, I know, is that there are tax benefits involved. You can apply for a tax abatement because it's a redevelopment zone. Everything else can be done with or without the redevelopment zone, but you can't get the tax benefit without the redevelopment zone. So somebody very, very, very greatly wanted a tax break, all right? So therefore, we go to redevelopment zone. And we take a very good look at it. And tax abatements aren't bad, I mean, in and of themselves, as long as the township is held whole, the schools are held whole, the fire companies that are going to need new equipment to deal with anything that's built there are held whole, and that the residents in general are held whole. The township of Franklin does not, not, not have a great record on tax abatement and who it gives it to. And ex post facto tax abatement is something that I've discussed in the past and I won't discuss it again. I'm not against it in all cases, it's absolutely necessary as a tool to have in your box and I'm glad you have it, Mayor. But it should never be given ex post facto after somebody built a building. And we've had that discussion. So I'm going to make a couple suggestions to you tonight. I think that again, you have to be like Caesar's wife, above suspicion. And I'm going to suggest a couple things that if you make any recommendations to the Township Committee, you have three Township Committee men here tonight, by the way. One to be seated, not yet, congratulations, Mike, the mayor, and my good friend Heather Flame. You have three Township Committee people here. Make these recommendations, Mr. Petch, and I know you'll lead the way because you're an honest person. Number one, nobody that sits on the zoning or planning board benefits in any way from any project in a development zone. They don't do the paving. They don't do the landscaping, they don't do the fire alarms. And I know you won't, Mr. Petch, because you have integrity. Secondly, I would suggest this. We talked about hired guns, all right? The other people that benefit are your hired guns. I would suggest you use a conflict attorney and you use a conflict engineer. So there's no benefit to be annoyed by having this happen. Thirdly, I suggest that no one that sits on Township Committee, whether it's through an LLC with hidden interests through a spouse or through any other person, whether it's zoning board, planning board, or Township Committee, in any way benefits from anything that has to do with any redevelopment project. You're talking about very important environmental issues, I'm sure you'll weigh them carefully. You're talking about very important economic issues, but most importantly, you're talking about. But most importantly, you're talking about very important moral issues and let's deal with those. Thank you, Mr. Petch.
Hi. My name is Nate Kleiman. I actually live in Elmer Borough, but I farm here in Franklin Township and in Pitts Grove as well and frequently go hiking in section two of this land in question. I just wanted to say for the, on behalf of the farmers and fellow fishermen and hunters who use this land, that this is, while it may not be designated as part of the Pine Lands Management Area, this land is very special. It, we don't have much land like this in this area. It is part of the Pine Lands ecosystem from a science, from a biological perspective. So I also wanted to say that, I'll, I'll keep it very quick. This is, you know, the, we've, in, in the report, it says multiple times, this is an area in need of redevelopment. And, you know, I think from, from what we've heard from, from the people here today and even, even just from reading the report, it doesn't seem to me that this is an area in, in need of redevelopment. In fact, it's, you know, it's not developed now, so redevelopment seems like the wrong word for it. And finally, while this is a, what is it, a non-condemnation report, I, I just wanted to clarify that that doesn't mean that the Township Commission could not decide to take property by eminent domain if that property is standing in the way of the development that the commission, that the committee wants to undertake, whether it's property on Leonard Cake Road or property on Porch Town Road. And I, I'm not a lawyer, but that's my understanding of eminent domain and Supreme Court precedent on that subject. So I urge you to recommend the rejection of this plan. Thank you.
Can I have me out there, a condemnation piece of it? Is that true? And can it be written, and can we take a position that we want and would not? I'm not in favor of condemnation. Can we take a position that?
It's already part of it. I mean, it's already, they're already talking about only designating it as a non-condemnation area. As far as governmental power to have power over eminent domain, I mean, that exists. It doesn't go away. But specifically for this, they're not seeking.
You're, you're comfortable that, that position is strong enough if we move it forward?
If, if I may, there, there has been a recent case law, and that's why, you know, earlier area in need studies did not have to declare whether they are condemnation or non-condemnation. But there has been a recent case law since then. It has been a requirement of the state statute where at the onset of the study starting, the governing body has to declare whether they are studying it for condemnation or non-condemnation. This study has been designated as for non-condemnation study. And that's what it's going to be judged. You can't just change it.
That's correct. You can't change it, you just can't arbitrarily change it.
It would require another process to start.
Hi, I'm Suzanne McCarthy. I live at 803 Frye's Mill Road, Franklinville. I'd just like to raise some of the environmental issues that were mentioned in the report but not discussed here tonight. And that is the fact that these areas are, according to the New Jersey DEP Landscape Project, are primarily inhabited by threatened and endangered species documented. The vast majority of all three areas have, had documented state level threatened and endangered species that we assume and hope are still there. I doubt the ones that are still there on Area Three because that was cut back so much. But there were pine snakes and other creatures that inhabited that landscape. The other fact is that this is all forested. And to me, cutting forests now, for any reason at all practically, is something that we should avoid at all costs. Just think climate change, that's all you have to do. We need to preserve the forests, plant more, retain farmland as well because the soils hold carbon. I think that the idea of creating a redevelopment zone in this town is kind of totally pointless and absurd, especially in this location. In fact, I don't even understand why the Area Three, Section Three moves over all the way to incorporate the wetlands that are below Malaga Lake. I mean, that's completely, totally wet, so nobody would ever be able to do anything with it anyway. So why is it even in the redevelopment zone? To say nothing of Section One with its total lack of access and two streams running through it. So it just doesn't make sense to me at all. There's almost no upland and what upland there is is forested, which we should be trying to retain. I don't think we should recommend to the Township Committee that we adopt a redevelopment zone at all. I don't see the point. And to me, it's, the sole purpose is that redevelopment zones have much looser zoning so that the zoning can be changed and incorporate and allow more things than are listed in our current zoning for interchange commercial zones. Interchange, yeah, interchange commercial zones. So to me, the point of the redevelopment zone, there must be somebody who really wants this because it, it only benefits if you do change the zoning and then you end up with some kind of a use that you don't want, such as a warehouse, which I think most people in this town do not want to see. And, or some other use that we would all consider relatively noxious. So my feeling is that we don't need a redevelopment zone and we shouldn't be recommending to the Township Committee that we adopt one at all. And in addition.
Thank you. But let me, I respect your expertise, so that's why I want to propose the same, the question in an opposite direction. In a redevelopment plan and in an application, there are all types of controls, whether the own planning or zoning side, depending on which group it is, you have control of what, where and what goes on. If there was not a redevelopment zone, area, plan in place, what would prevent the owner of, and it's a single person owner, what would prevent him from declaring the 326 acres that haven't been clear cut? What would prevent him from saying that he is a farmer and clear cut all that property?
Which property, which property are you talking about?
I'm talking about the, well, I'm talking about all of it. The, you know, the, the whole piece minus the FAS piece, which already been clear cut, 52 acres that are already been cleared. What would prevent someone from coming in and clear cutting the other 326 acres because he's going to farm it?
There isn't anything that would prevent that, but you're not talking about a single owner for areas besides the FAS piece and the Rome piece? And those two?
I'm talking about the Rome piece.
Well, the Rome piece.
What would prevent him from farming that property and clear? What, what, I'm trying to compare the controls.
And flood hazard area.
And redevelopment plan and an application, future application to the planning or zoning board would have in controlling buffers and clearing and locations and all that.
Well, that's all established.
To the fact that the individual would have a right tomorrow under the New Jersey Right to Farm Act to go. Well, I disagree with you.
No, no.
The Right to Farm Act or under the Forestry Act to go in and harvest the trees.
There, there's something that would prevent him from harvesting the trees, except of course, that in Section One, you've got wetlands, streams, and, and substantial buffers. And you probably have buffers that are high value, at least 150 feet because of the threatened and endangered species. So you're left with a little strip of land, basically, that's upland that he could do that to. So.
Is that he would have more, there would be much less control if it was under the Right to Farm or the Forestry Act.
But no, it's not because it's controlled by Wetlands Protection Act. And the, and he would, he could only really work in the upland areas that are on the east side adjacent to Route 55 in that parcel, in that section.
Our hesitation with wetland are different, but my point is.
Wetlands are wetlands, they're delineated by the.
Whether he can farm it or not is.
No, you can't.
Our opinion is different. But my point is that the individual today has the right to go in as FAS land.
But not to cut, not to cut in wetlands or in their buffers. So that's 62% of the piece at least.
He can still go in and wherever he's allowed to with no control from the town of what's being done.
Well, we do have, we do have a requirement that if, if you clear more than a certain acreage.
The Right to Farm is a pretty powerful body.
No, it's.
Because I, I want to mention something because I've talked to foresters and stuff like that. The forester, if you have a forestry plan, the forester can get away and say, well, look, you can clear all these cedar trees, these, in, in the swamp.
Yeah.
And with.
Not in the swamp.
You can do that.
Not in the swamp. No, you can't. That's not true.
I disagree with you.
Well, okay, we could, we can check that.
I have property that's in wetlands and I have a forestry plan. So I, I have some expertise on that.
Well, my understanding is that in, in wetlands itself, you can't really be timbering. But it, so we would need to resolve that. But I think we're raising the point. We're raising a question that we have, that's true throughout the rest of our township, except the Highlands area. Somebody can go in and they can cut the wood on their property and we can't control that. But I don't see, I don't see what the value is of the redevelopment zone anyway, because it's really not going to stop somebody from doing that unless you have some sort of prohibition put into the plan, which doesn't exactly make sense because what you're trying to do is increase the economic activity in that zone. That's a big part of it. And I think.
This zone was identified in the master plan as an interchange commercial.
That's right.
Property, which is 0.2% of the overall square miles.
Even, even so, the point of the redevelopment plan is to make, is one, a tax benefit and two, it gives much laxer controls on changing zoning. And that's my concern as to what would go in there. And once you develop, once you name the redevelopment zone, once you designate it, you're pretty much done because you're going to get a plan and we'll have another hearing and we'll have a lot of people that will come out about it if they don't like it, or maybe they will. But it's not going to, it's really going to get passed because there's something behind this bush to me. And I think that the area is sensitive ecologically, it should be maintained. And I don't think that we have met the criteria either, despite what CME may say. If you go through the criteria, if you actually look at these eight requirements, the fact that something has not been developed in 10 years prior to the adoption of the resolution and is difficult to develop is pretty much of a, the only, the only criterion that might be met by some of these areas. And it's kind of a ridiculous one because the reason that certain areas were not developed, like Section One, is because it's so difficult to do and expensive to do. And when you talk about Section Three and the FAS land property, he has, he had an approval for a development but didn't build it. So we're not talking about something that hasn't or couldn't happen or hasn't happened. It hasn't because of a lack of redevelopment zone. It hasn't happened because the people that own the property haven't wanted to do the expensive part of making it happen. So again, I still don't see the value of a redevelopment zone in an area with threatened and endangered species, high value forest, and very little control over what rezoning it would bring into our town. So I'm pointing, just expressing my opinion.
Thank you. Joe Arsenal, 961 Clark Avenue, Franklin Township resident. As you guys know, you could indict a ham sandwich as anything could be called a redevelopment zone by the state redevelopment plan. Anything can be called it. It's very loose. There's really not very much control on it. As Suzanne just said, the fact that it was 10 years and something was developed or this, that, or the other thing is inconsequential to the real development potential of a site. There are three areas here, and I want to call them by names. I can't, I, I, I have a hard time with one, two, and three. The first site is the Porch Town side, I used to call it, because at least it's something where I can put a name on it. There's very little room over there to actually work. I did a little homework on it and it looks like only about 30% of that site is developable. The rest of it is flood plain, wetlands, and exceptional resource buffer. Before I go very much further though, I want to, I want to make some points on what you're saying, Mr. Petch, on terms of what you can do in a wetlands. I'm a wetland professional. Been a wetland professional since 1980. I've been dealing with wetlands since the beginning. Stop me right there, one second, one second, please. If you're testifying. I'm not testifying, I am not testifying. I am letting you know that you were wrong in stating that, Michael, should I raise my hand and become an expert testimony?
I wish, it's not required.
No, I, let's do it. He's identifying himself as an expert. Let's do it. I just want, I gotta do this right. I do.
Expert testimony, you're about to give the truth, about to put the truth, so hope you got it.
I do. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Joe. No problem. As you know, I am. And what you're saying was completely wrong. You can forest in wetlands with a forestry management plan. But you have to have a forestry management plan. You cannot just go cut. And when it comes to farming, you cannot clear un, uncleared forest for farm today. There's only one permit available for you and none of you farmers up there are cranberry farmers. It's only available for cranberry farmers. So you can't clear wetlands for farm. So that was completely incorrect. So I just want to make sure that you understand that because you were postulating something to the rest of the public here which was not correct. And let me continue. This area only has a very small section of it that's developable. The same thing with the southern side, which I'm calling Willow Grove because it's up against the Willow Grove section. Most of these things are encompassed within the regulatory section of DEP or the flood hazard rules. So the limits of, of the areas that are available for development are very small in Areas One and Areas Two. It's only Area Three that has any real potential. And it really does have the potential. In fact, there's even a sign out there today advertising it for building. So it's not as if that those things can't be happening, but the other two areas have zero potential. And on top of that, gentlemen and ladies, if this had the potential, it would have already been built. It's at an intersection of a major highway, of a state highway and an east-west highway. If this would have been such a developable site, someone would have already jumped on this. They haven't because the site is not appropriate. The Porch Town site has got all kinds of problems. It's only got about 500 foot of road frontage. It's got almost a half a mile of real frontage, but when you get rid of the wetlands, the wetland buffer, and all the other things, you're crammed up right up, up against the off-ramp, which I'm sure DOT is going to have a problem with. The same thing on the other side. There's a private road that goes in, it makes the access into the back. There's developable land there, but who's going to go back there? There's no access, there's no road frontage, there's no signage to get out to it. There's only one area of this thing that has any potential, and that's the, the FAS land site. The reason why the other two were put in here, I have no idea. If anybody hasn't seen it, you should be looking at a technology which is called LiDAR. If you haven't looked at it to see what these logs look like, let me just hold up a piece of paper so you can take a look at it. Okay, this is just something I taped together, unfortunately used up two ink things. Let me walk up so everybody can see it. Just walk the way, you've seen this, I'm sure, I'm sure. Okay, if you're noticing the blue, all that blue, that is all either flood hazard area or wetlands. The areas that aren't a buffer, it's only that little section over here that has really had any real potential, any potential for being more than five foot deep to the high water table. Because it's only that area that has E for Saloon. There's a little bit of liquid over there, but it's mostly ash and metal, metal hawken rock. They are not. They are not usable.
Can I ask a question? You're, you're, you're a wetlands expert. I, I always thought that wetlands was, you know, maybe within like two feet, maybe within five feet.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is that the area that's usable, in order for this site to, I'm moving away, Tom, I'm sure, the site that's usable has to have the capability of a septic system. So you need five foot to seasonal high water table. Either that or your septic system, as you know, is a developer. You're going to raise it and expand it. So you run into a.
My question was with wetlands, because I thought you said wetland.
No, no. What I'm saying is that there's only so much usable space and there's only so much usable soil over there and that's the Porch Town site. It's really, it's, it's so compromised that to put it on the plan, you would never be able to get a permit to come in from, from Porch Town Road or from my owner, wait, you wouldn't get it. I've only got one individual permit in my career and that was from, for Robbinsville bypass and it took Christie Whitman behind me to push it. So it's not as if these things are easy to get. They're very, very difficult to get. And the state would be somebody who's going to be on top of that site and they will not allow that to happen. As Suzanne said, there's exceptional resource values there and there's so much more that you don't know because it's private land. Same thing happens on the south side on the Willow Grove site. As I said, if I may wrap it up because I'm over my time, that it's only the FAS land that has any real potential. And it's only that area that's outside of the flood hazard area now, so the wetlands that has any potential. Everything else is foolhardy and it's actually not a good design. And as Mr. Kennedy said, your, your, your people shoot and tell you what you want to hear. But I'm telling you right now, as a resident and as somebody who does this for a living, this is a horrible place for that. I work all over the state for people like these people. And these are the last places that ever send me. If I ever told them that I want you to develop here, I'd be standing outside doing something else somewhere else. So I just want to let you know that I feel that that is, that the economic development zone at this location is really inappropriate. And if there is any appropriateness to it, it's only on section three or the Malaga side because that's the only one that has any real development. Before I leave, there's only, the, the, the total area that's available for economic development here out of three hundred acres, three hundred and eighty acres is under fifty percent. Why would you designate areas as part of it if you're under fifty percent?
I have one other question. Now, if what you're saying is a hundred percent true, if this, if this was approved or was set forward, then wouldn't the state DEP be the one that's protecting you in the end?
Well, yeah, the DEP would. They would be the one that would.
I've got some, I've gotten DEP permits. They are not easy to get.
No, that's right.
No, they are very difficult.
Very difficult to get. It's one thing you're getting general permits, another thing you're getting some of these other ones.
Yeah, but I, I'm just saying, in my experience and I know that you have, that you've got actual flying wetlands, so that's your expertise, am I correct?
From A to Z.
Yeah, okay. So that's what I'm saying is that if what you're saying is correct, then the tax is going to be protected by the state law.
Well, I'm going to say protected. Why would you even bring it up to give it an option? So you're, you're saying that you're going to send a dog out in the yard and hopefully it's not going to bite somebody because I told him not to do it.
I don't know.
You know, it's, it's, I don't, I'm trying to look at the analogy. That doesn't make any sense. John, it makes no sense. If anything, you want to protect yourself wholeheartedly by getting rid of the area that have no potential for development. Why would you include any area that's wet? Why? Any? Zero? None? Other than the fact that they're part of the same block and lots?
Yeah, I don't know exactly what it, what it is. You mean you're testifying that it is, then you're saying.
Well, you'll find out.
Testifying that it is and there's no ability to.
Well, well.
You're, you're testifying that it is and there's no ability to develop it, but then you're saying, well, we should put it in there because I could be wrong, I guess. Because you're telling me that.
I don't understand. I don't understand.
I don't understand either because if you're saying that there's no chance of developing.
That's right. Then why would you include it into a plan? If you can't develop it, why add it in? Just like extra paper? It's just like the, the two hundred pound weight in the back of the car for something? I mean, it has no value.
I don't, I don't know, but I mean, you're saying that it's not developable. I don't know that.
Well, you'll find out when the actual studies are done, when the wetlands are done, when the archaeology and cultural resources are done. All those things will have to be done before any of this could happen.
I've got wetland permits. I've probably got wetland permits a half a dozen times.
Yeah.
And none of them are easy and they all took a substantial.
Well, what I'm, I guess, John, what I'm saying is that there's, there's no reason to include areas within the plan that have no potential to be used for the plan.
Have you done any borrows on these sites?
No. I'm not allowed, I'm not, it's a private property. You can't go on private property.
So you're, you're, you're saying that.
I'm doing exactly what they did. I used state information that produced the information that we both have looked at. And it looks to me that there's only about forty-five or fifty percent, under fifty percent of the entire three hundred and eighty site acres that you can actually use. And most of it's on FAS land. And most of it's over here. Fifty-eight percent of this site or better is usable. That's the only thing, everything else is less than fifty percent. So it's useless. Well, look, I've taken enough time. Thank you very much.
My name's Patricia McCool. I live at twenty-four Bosom Court, Malaga. I have all the same concerns as everybody else here regarding the wetlands and the inhabitants of the wetlands, but I live down the other end, obviously, on Oak Avenue. My concern is also the traffic increase with whatever businesses go there. Have you ever tried to make a left out of Oak Avenue? Sometimes you can sit there for twenty minutes. And the people that walk down forty, where people are coming off of fifty-five, it's scary. I, I watched three people almost get wiped out. It's incredible. And with that, adding whatever businesses that you may put there because you don't know what kind of businesses are going to go there. You say that our taxes aren't going to increase, but I have to disagree because with whatever businesses come there, increased EMS, increased fire, increased police, with every business is going to come issues. There are so many businesses in this town already that have help wanted signs. People aren't getting the jobs. So to build new buildings and new places of business, who's going to work in them? But people aren't already going to have to get the jobs through there now. And then to increase the traffic and then have more trucks coming down Oak Avenue and the kids with no sidewalks and it's just, it's going to be a disaster.
You got sidewalks, you got sidewalks.
There's no on Oak Avenue. Thank you.
My name is Nancy Jones. I live in Malaga, one forty Nicholas Drive, and I can attest to the fact that our water is already polluted. I have a poet system in my home because I have mercury in my well. I've also been flooded twice by groundwater. I have a giant sump pump to prevent it from happening again. It happened because the house was built next to mine. So this problem I have is only going to be multiplied. Everybody will have this problem. Also, in my opinion, when you talk about redevelopment by tearing out forests, that is environmental destruction. That is not redevelopment. I fly to Europe every year in November. I have watched the snowpack on the Alps just recede. And twenty sixteen was very thick. Last month, it's only on the peaks. Now, it's only getting hotter. We need to be planting trees, not tearing trees down. Thank you.
I know I was up here before.
That's okay.
I just wanted to say about nature and how beautiful it is, and I know that there's some people that just absolutely love nature and other people that could care less one way or the other, and that's fine. We happen to really love our nature. We really, really do. It's just so beautiful. We even have rabbits that come up to my husband because they know him. And it's, it's just a unique adventure. And it's nice to have all of these, even if they are coyotes, no matter what they are, they still deserve to live there. And I also wanted to ask all of you, if you had this development coming to your area where you live, do any of you live near this? You do? You don't? Okay, so there's a few. If you were to live here, would you want that? Would you want this where you live? Whether it's on a lake or polluting water or whatever, doesn't matter. Would you want this where you live? And I really think you have to think of the people. The people are really asking you and begging you not to do this. It's not, it's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Sarah Patrick Nani. I live on one oh nine Peachtree Drive in Franklinville. I don't have anything technical to offer to this conversation. I appreciate everyone who did. But that's actually the part that I have a problem with because the language that we're using, we say things like underutilization or, you know, value of the lot or, you know, vacant land, you know, there have been no improvements that have been made on this land. And I think that, that language is just fundamentally wrong and it's, it causes us to, to operate in this framework, which makes us believe that, or creates an illusion that we are separate from everything that's going on out there. And, you know, I guess you spend too much time under these flashing lights and you might think that, um, that you really are, but I don't know, I don't think that's true. And I think that before you make this decision, you should go out into this forest that you want to cut down and, and spend some time there. You know, I don't know. I know people, everyone has their jobs and, and stuff and we're all occupied with different things, but I think it's important to remember that there's a lot of life in that, in this forest that we want to, you know, that we want to cut down and, and just to spend some time there and reflect and just, you know, be still and be quiet and just kind of understand that there's a lot of life out there that we're going to be destroying if, you know, if we do cut this forest down. So, yeah, thank you. And, you know, I, I of course encourage you to, to not go forward with this. Thank you.
Hello again. John Dressendorf, thirty-two Underkirk Road, Franklinville. Uh, one thing I wanted to make, I don't know if you guys are aware, but I don't see in the plan adjacent things that may affect it. Are you aware that, was it lot forty-six oh one, there's a three-acre truck stop or truck fueling station going in? Has that been approved already?
I was attached to approve some time ago, some time ago.
Okay. And that, and the, and the traffic study and everything was incorporated on top of this or is that, is that in this at all? I don't.
This is just.
Where are they from?
Right. Well, okay.
So, you know, whether they're.
That's, that, that was been approved a long time ago?
Six.
Okay. All right.
The general, I just put.
All right. Just, this is, was this a question to make everybody? Thank you.
For all the poor people in this town.
Hi, Hangee Long, thirty-three thirteen Main Road. I've been a twenty-seven-year union carpenter over in Philly. I used to go to City Hall to get whatever building we were trying to get past. The devastation it brings, yeah, it's going to bring construction jobs. They're going to tear the land up. They're going to get rid of the forest. What about all the animals, the wetlands, everything that's protected? It's not benefiting any of us. You know, it'll be a short-term solution for a few jobs and that's it. These guys all want to talk about it. The guy, the expert that was up here made a good point. Why are we even thinking about allowing someone to build where it's wetlands? Because I know on my property, I have a stream going through it. I'm not allowed to build there. I'm not allowed to tear any of my trees down. So what makes this company? Who's getting the money out of it? Where's it going? All of you should not even be entertaining this idea at all.
Nora Craig, I want to pick up on what Mr. Kennedy, Mayor Kennedy was saying. On the taxation issue associated with this, people have said, why are we redeveloping virgin forests that's never been developed before? Because that just doesn't make logical sense, except of course, under the statutes of New Jersey and the state of New Jersey statutes, we know are just a little loopy to begin with. The other thing is taxes twofold. There's a tax benefit to the residents when we get good revenue coming in. There's a tax benefit to the property owner if they get any kind of a tax abatement or if something that's done by any of our committees or councils increases their property value so that they can make money out of it. All right? I'm not going to sling anything at anybody. I don't know anything about that side. But let's look at why are we doing this to begin with? Right now, I tried to get that answer at the township committee meeting. That was the answer I wanted. And Dave Deegan, I think, gave me, you know, the real answer, which is this allows the township committee to do the payment in lieu of taxes type taxation methodology. Their underlying goal is to increase the tax revenue into the township portion of the budget versus what's going to the schools versus what's going to the counties. Okay?
Right.
So you got a problem. You're a township committee member. You really need to find a way to increase tax revenue. Now, I have to say, over the years in this town, and I've been in here since the eighties, that the continuing cycle of people up on the township committee have done a very good job in keeping our tax, you know, our taxes down, our property taxes down. Well done. In light of the increased cost of everything, of the salaries for all municipal employees, for the utilities, you name it, we're hitting it. Whose costs haven't increased, right? Okay, so I, I'll go talk to them for a minute. Now, town has a problem. They need to generate more revenue to fix our roads and do little things like that. Not the schools, not the counties, but Wednesday's leaf day. Okay?
Wednesday's bulk trash.
Yeah, Wednesday's bulk, okay. But the township needs more revenue to do this. This is one methodology, methodology by which I think, and this is my assumption, I haven't talked to any of these guys except the township committee meeting, that they think they can help increase the tax revenues by bringing in somebody who's going to build something, some land improvement, right? And the hook to get them in is that payment in lieu of taxes thing. Hey, you know, we'll cut you break for the first ten years or the first five years or whatever. Not that that's going to improve your roads immediately because it won't. Now, if I was up there in the township committee, I would say to the town at this point, counties, at some point, we got to bite the bullet and we simply have to raise the tax rate. Not build something, not bulldoze our forests, you know, no warehouses, no more traffic, no more pollution, but the township needs the funds. Right? Now, are any of them going to have the courage on the township committee, all right, to say, look, friends, we need the money? All right, now, let's say for sake of argument, they trash this plan. They trash it here and say, you know, we really don't need this. FASios can sell and somebody can build on FAS land. The rest of the land is pretty worthless to build on to begin with. Townies, what are you going to do if we tell you, we're going to raise the tax rate and it's going to cost you each arbitrary number here, another hundred bucks a year, another two hundred bucks a year?
It's not anyway.
It's not anyway.
Yeah, I started eleven hundred dollars, now it's ninety-three hundred dollars.
Well, the money's got to come from somewhere. So at twenty-eight seconds.
I, I know, bring it back.
I'm bringing it back.
Twenty-one seconds, let's go.
You have to make a recommendation. Well, you don't necessarily have to. You can table a thing and say, heck, the other guys do it next year. Okay, but if you make a recommendation to township committee, I think your recommendation should be that you scrap the concept of a redevelopment zone completely, relook at your budgets and your budget requirements, bite the bullet, come out right out front and say, boys and girls, we need another three million dollars in revenue or another four million dollars or whatever you need to cover those costs, raise the property taxes, get it done with, but don't play these games. Thank you.
Thanks. Frank Scavelli, thirty thirteen Dutchmal Road. Chairman Patch, it's been a while, nice to see you again.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Travolone.
I look forward to a debate, Frank.
No, no debate, hopefully.
We have many.
We're all on the same side, I think. Is there any pressing legal need or some other, like binding need to adopt this plan at this time? Is there any reason to pursue this right now when there's no like law? Is there any reason to pursue this right now, or there's no like lawsuit or?
There's no lawsuit. There's no, there is no application, there's no lawsuit. And to Angie's, I'll answer, going back to Angie's question, I'll tie this into it. We were taskeded, the township committee tasked the planning board to look in, on these lots for a redevelopment plan. The expertise is not up here to generate a report like this. So we turned to our engineer to generate the report. We're receiving the report and our job is to hand it back to the township committee. So, uh, did we start this, or do we ask to do this? No, we were asked to do it by the township committee. And we're following, we're following through statutorily what we're required to do. Yes, there are some 45 day requirements in there and all that type of stuff. But we're basically, any decision that is made or to add, subtract, or change can be put back or changed at the township committee level. So we're, we're passed through conduit to the township committee that someday, you know, may move forward to develop. If that answers your question, I asked around your question, but if that answers your questions, we're a conduit. We were just to do something, we had the engineer do it, and we're giving it back to the township committee. And quite honestly, when, you know, they figure out what they want to do with it, that's the time, you know, there are the people to hold accountable. We are an appointed board, they are an elected board, and you have to count them.
You've been tasked by the committee to look into this basically. But there's no need at present for the town to pursue this. There's no legal need.
Our task is to hand it back to them, saying, "You asked us to generate a report, here's the report." And they can do whatever they want with it.
I understand, okay, thank you. Um, will water and sewer be brought into the town potentially as a result of this plan? I did review the plan, not an engineer. But I do think it did mention water and sewer. So is that a potential result of the plan?
The problem, the problem we have, the problem, the problem there is, is that this is a plan identifying an area. It is not, it has nothing to do with an applicant, a building. You know, obviously, you know, there's a whole bunch of rumors about warehousing. There is no plan, there's no hotel, there's no supermarket, there's no nothing. So to answer this water and sewer question, you can't do that unless you have an application. So this, Mika, do, uh, help me out here. This plan doesn't address, other than identifying, you know, the need for it, it doesn't address X number of gallons per minute for this type of use, because there is no application.
Yeah, this study is only studying the properties as it exists today.
So if the town, so this gets forwarded to the town committee, if they pass it, will then a plan be drawn up, which will have specifics, "We want to develop this area this way, this area this way, this area this way?"
And then it comes back to the planning board as an application. And an area will be then at that point held on the, on the application. Whether it goes here or something, depending on the, the application. But they'll come back to one of the boards at that point in time for, for an application, because now there is a building, now there is a requirement for X number of gallons and X number of gallons of something. So those, it's premature to be able to answer that when you don't know what's coming, or could be coming.
Right, so the way that the, the plan was kind of worded, if it's adopted, the town will sort of be looking to develop this area, correct? So the planning or zoning board will potentially be getting applicants, which could want to put water and sewer in through Malaga, up on Route 40, 55 through the parcel there.
Water and sewer, you know, how they do, water and sewer need to be addressed at that point in time. But this is only identifying an area.
Right, won't there be some kind of sort of weight behind this, once the plan is adopted, to potentially accept applicants, then we'll say, "Well, we passed the redevelopment plan, we now want to develop this area. This guy has a, legally meets all the requirements. He is going to, you know, he wants to put water and sewer, he has the money. Let's accept this proposal to develop the land."
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly.
So if we are concerned about some kind of Washington township-esque scenario, this may be a problem.
Well, the Washington, the Washington township scenario, and we've both been around for a long time. And your dad, if he's here.
He's back over there, yep.
Is he? Alright. Frank, you want to come back up? Washington Township built all the, all those housings, all those houses from the influx of Cherry Hill in Philadelphia, and then tried to overlay commercial on top of that at that point in time. And it was a losing battle, because the houses were there, and they tried to bring the commercial ratables in afterwards. Here, we're looking at a little, it's being looked at differently.
I just think you're kind of opening the Pandora's box a little bit by saying, "We want to develop this." And then, you know, potentially, you're going to, I just feel like there's going to be weight at that point to bring in water and sewer, and once you do that, I think it could be off to the races as far as all kind of development. Not just here, I mean, it could start with this parcel here, if you put water and sewer here, you could have all kinds of development going on. So I just think that's something that should be considered as far as approving the redevelopment plan. Would you consider restricting the area to be developed to much closer to the interchange? So you guys have, you know, this huge, it's this section that has the streams, right? Section one? I mean, why not just say, "Well, we're only going to develop 50 acres or so, or even the place that's already been clear cut." Yeah, everybody knows, I mean, imagine if, I mean, just as far as the rural character of the town, imagine if someone came in and put a warehouse on that clear cut area of land that's now a farm. It was woodland like five years ago, I remember when they clear cut it. I mean, they farmed it once with corn, yeah, that they probably put in there for, you know, just for appearances, or I don't know. I don't know, the guy don't mean to disparage them, but it's going to change the entire area of the town if just that area is developed, if just that. If you come off 55 and there's a huge warehouse in that farm field now, let alone if this other, I mean, this is a huge area of woods, it's right in the heart. Imagine if you're fishing on Iona Lake and behind you, you know, a quarter mile is now all these lights at night, you want to go for a romantic stroll along the dam or something, and now there's a, you know, parking lot with 100 lights and, you know. Yeah.
So the only difference here is by declaring it redevelopment, it allows you to do the pilot. The zoning allows to do all the things that you're talking about.
Right. Including, including the fact that the faz land property was clear cut. And, you know, I understand where Joe's coming from, and I know, I respect his expertise. But it doesn't prevent them from getting a forestry permit to cut trees or to clear cut. Here, there's an application that a board would be able to have the buffers and the area and control over. And that's, that's the point I was trying to make. I'm not, I wasn't trying to say 100% of wetlands can, could be farmed. What I was trying to say is that the, the ability to do what has occurred. You know, the forestry piece on the other side of Oak Avenue, the clear cut on fazio can happen tomorrow with, with the property owner. So anyway, and going back, having the control of an application that the board at least gives the town control what's going on where, what's going on in the buffers, the sizes and all that type of stuff. And that's the comparison I was trying to make when I, when I made that statement earlier.
Right, that, I mean, that makes sense to me. Maybe the, maybe the planning board could consider its recommendation of restricting the development closer to the interchange, maybe protecting the areas that are wetlands. Maybe saying, "We don't want warehouses."
Mr. Arsenal testified that, I forget the amount of acres. That decision should be made by the owner of the property. If I got 300 acres here, you're telling me I can only put something on 25, that might change my thinking, right?
Right.
So, you know, that's, that's the state that's going to come in there and say.
Well, it could also be the planning board saying, "As protecting the rural character of the town, we don't want."
Also say, "You got to have so much buffers here, you got to have this."
Right. I mean, I just think, coming off 55 there, if this whole area got developed, it would completely rip the heart out of the rural character of this town. And I've, I'm, we're three generations in here, my family, I planned to live here my whole life. I love this town. And in addition to the ecological aspects of just the fact that there are living creatures, I know people don't like to be sentimental at planning board meetings, but, you know, there are endangered species and whatnot. And people, you know, I mean, I, speaking for myself, and I think a lot of people, they don't want this to turn into Washington Township, Camden, even Clayton or Glassboro, you know, this is a, this is the most rural, dare I say charming town in, and preserved, yeah, in the area. And I just, I would hate to see it developed, and maybe the town can put a recommendation forward to the committee. I know there are three committee members and the mayor here, but put some kind of recommendation about, "We don't want to see huge warehouses. We want to restrict the development to the area near the interchange." I mean, would the town put more roads in to, that was part of the study, right? The idea of having a road through to Leonard Cake? So we could be paving more roads at the taxpayer's expense? Potentially?
Potentially, if that piece is included. And, you know, earlier on, I had made a statement that I wasn't comfortable with traffic exiting on the local roads.
Well, like, Mr.
It goes right through the wetlands.
Right.
It goes right through the wetlands, there's no way.
Yeah, that can't, but Mr. Arsenal was saying about on Porch Town, there's not a lot of road frontage. Is that something where you could say, "Well, we want to develop this area, so we're going to pave a new road through here?"
It goes right through that wetland, like to access that.
No, the Porch Town, the, okay. Gotcha, okay. Well, I think I made my point, but, you know, it is a rural town, and I think most people want it to stay that way, at least I do. So hope you guys will consider that. Thanks.
It's good seeing you, Frank.
Christina Ridgeway, 319 Malaga Park Drive. I just have a couple of questions here. I feel like you were really drilling home the whole non-condemnation thing, and "Oh, there's no eminent domain to worry about." But you're talking on the municipal side of this equation, correct? With the eminent domain? Okay, you've all kind of made it clear that you don't want to touch that Leonard Cake side. Let's protect Leonard Cake Road, so we're moving everything to Route 40. We've already had others talk about the chaos that traffic would become, because we already got a truck stop going in up the road, and, "Oh, let's see what we can do with, you know, maybe 50% of these three lots here." So now the state's going to have to come in, add some traffic lights at Oak, at the off ramps for 55, widen to four lanes from at least Porch Town through the Malaga intersection? Are you going to tell me that the state's not going to exercise the eminent domain over any of the people between Porch Town and the Malaga intersection? 322, ring a bell? But, most of you have already indicated that, you know, we live in Piney Hollow, and we live in Janvier, and we live over here in Forest Grove. It doesn't impact you? How about we go throw this over on Takahau? Oh, the town needs more money. Okay, well, whatever happened to all these good men of Franklin Township that were working to develop Meredith Farms? You think that if you change the zoning to all these lots, that, okay, now our, our good, hardworking committee, we can go out and we can shop and find people to come put their businesses on this land? Because you were so successful at finding businesses at Meredith Farms? Where there's already city water and sewer? Because you were so damn successful? I'm not trying to, because you're only one man.
Christine, you brought it, you brought it up. Allow someone to answer your question.
I was just saying it wasn't personal.
No, it's not, but it needs to be answered.
There's some misunderstandings on that and why that is not a success. And I see you rolling your eyes, but the truth of the matter is, you talk about the city water and sewer already there. There's not city water and sewer already there.
Accessible.
No, the potential to have a water supply for that site is there, but it's never been developed. The reason why that, that property still sits vacant today is because the well there, that it wasn't functional, and it would have needed more money to go into making that well operational. The township committee at that time decided not to do that. They didn't want to put any more money into the, into the, into the project.
I'm not suggesting, I'm not suggesting the township put money into it.
And the further reason why that was not successful was because the money that was obtained from the government was 1.5 million dollars from the government, 1.5 million dollars from the township. Completely mismanaged, wasn't tracked, nobody was tracking expenses in the budget.
We know.
And several hundred thousand dollars had to be given back, because the township committee decided to walk away from that project. So let's not say that that was a total failure. It was a total failure because the township committee decided to make it a total failure. And I, I just had to, you know, that has to be said.
I understand. But we're titling this redevelopment. So you're looking to shop for people that would want to completely develop this property from the ground up. If they're willing to put that kind of investment into this land, let them invest money in the Meredith Farms. If you got people you think are interested in Franklin Township, why do you have to take this from us? Because it doesn't affect you?
But the risk is already there for that, that property to be developed. It's zoned, what is it, interchange commercial?
Interchange commercial back in 2004.
Whatever they want to do. It's being.
But you want to expand. And we don't even want to.
380 acres, that, those parcels are already zoned, I see.
I understand that.
So the risk is there for a developer to come in and not have to go before it. The only time they would have to go before the planning board or zoning board is with the, with their application. And it's at that time, the zoning board and the planning board then can place restrictions on what can and can't go in.
Why can't you place your restrictions ahead of that?
We can say, whatever the recommendation is.
Because there's no application at this time. There's a redevelopment plan to allow the possibility of an applicant in the future. And at that point in time, the restrictions that you're referring to can be placed in.
But that's my point. Why do we need to allow the possibility? You just said that you're approving to allow the possibility. You can't have it both ways.
Recommend whether or not for it to be a redevelopment plan. The risk of having it developed is already there because of the way it's zoned.
Okay, so this is all about the tax abatements?
Not tax payment, pilot, which is payment in lieu of taxes, which allows the township to keep a large portion that would normally go to the county, minus 5% that would have to go to the county, and allow to use that money locally to improve roads. Or whatever they, whatever they decide to do. Improve old tracks, improve green leaf collection. Pardon me? No, there's no need today for paid firefighters.
Not yet.
Nora, we just, I've already had those conversations. So my point is that the pilot is a tool, the pilot plan, payment in lieu of taxes, is a tool to improve.
To make money.
Taxes locally.
But that's the whole thing. Can't you do this elsewhere? Why this?
Christine, the, the master plan back in '04 identified this area as interchange commercial.
Yes.
22% approximately.
But it's almost like you're encouraging, encouraging the widening of Route 40 and just completely ignoring the impact it'll have on the families that are actually on, you know, this corner of the township.
We're not ignoring that, we're discussing that, and that's why everyone.
You know, I mean, like, all these roads have school buses on them 10 times a day.
And a commercial property puts zero kids into the school system.
I'm not talking about those kids, I'm talking about the kids around it.
What about when you have to build low income housing when you put in the sewer system? Because it's acquired by the state.
And you're in like this where you're drilling no eminent domain. And you're in like this where you're drilling no eminent domain. Eventually, the state will come in and have to do something with Route Forty. So you might not be exercising eminent domain, but you're creating a storm that that's ultimately what will happen to people.
We could do absolutely nothing, and the state might have to come in and widen Route Forty.
Okay, well, then at least we can say it wasn't our neighbors' fault.
Exactly, yes.
Hi, I'm Sarah Harrison, one seventy-eight Belmont Ave, Malaga. I moved here with my husband in two thousand and seventeen. We relocated to Franklin Township from an urban area because we wanted to avoid being in an overly developed, um, area. When we moved here, we, uh, fixed up a foreclosed house rather than opting for new construction. We really enjoy, um, being near the lake, you know, I, I appreciate what my neighbors have said about the, the nature and the birds and everything. Um, I have serious concerns about what this redevelopment will do to our overall quality of life, and the overall quality of life for our neighbors and their families, especially their children. Um, you know, not that long ago, a child was hit on Oak, and there isn't, you know, that much traffic there now, and I have serious concerns about the safety for the neighborhood kids if the traffic were to increase, um, on Oak. Um, I have concerns about the negative impact it'll have on the ecosystem, the animals that are pushed out of their homes, its impact on water quality, traffic, taxes, the need for additional EMS, fire department, uh, supplies, policing, um, to support the development, uh, the pollution, both regular and light pollution, et cetera, et cetera. The list of negative implications and concerns could go on and on. Um, I also have serious concerns about some of the discrepancies regarding property lines that I've heard this evening. There have been several vacant businesses in town that I've observed in my short time here. I think about the, um, the strip where Ray's Pizza is, and how many empty, uh, commercial lots there are there, um, right now. And then I also think about, um, La Patrona, and how many different businesses have been there, and how frequently that's been vacant in my time here. Um, I feel strongly that we should shift the focus from further developing the area to developing the, uh, current vacant commercial lots that we have now, before developing more. I, I think, um, I, I think that we can all agree that we don't need, while that land is not currently allocated for a specific project, I think we can all agree that we are, um, at our quota of Dollar Generals and Super Wawas. Um, and in doing kind of a risk-benefit analysis, for me, the decision would be clear, um, I would implore you all to, uh, reject this proposal. Thank you.
Suzanne McCarthy again. Um, sorry, I'd just like to make a suggestion. In two thousand and twenty-three, we have to redo the master plan. And I think that that's an opportunity to really rethink this area and its zoning, to make it tighter, or less threatening, or leave it the way it is, whichever, whatever is decided by the community. So perhaps we should just wait before we develop, before we establish a redevelopment zone, when we're going to redo the master plan anyway, and, uh, have to redo it. It seems to me we keep talking about what the zoning is now that is just as threatening as it would be. I don't think that's really true either. I think that the zoning right now limits the kind of uses that can occur in these areas and on the property, faseline property in section three, and that the redevelopment zone would allow a much broader, uh, type of zoning, or it changes in zoning. So if we wait until we do the master plan, then everybody will have an opportunity to weigh in on what's going on in this location. And that's just a suggestion that the board then recommend against establishing the redevelopment zone at this time. Thank you. Hey, what else?
Just, I just.
Yep.
I just have clarification real quick, I'm sorry. Uh, just real, uh, I was calculating, you, you said it's point two percent?
Approximately.
This, this, this three hundred and eighty acres alone is one point six percent of our town's area, I just calculated it.
Okay.
So maybe it's two percent, not point two percent.
It, it may be, the numbers I was giving was.
I just wanted to make sure, this is point of clarification.
As, yeah, I, I disagree, it's a very small portion of the town is in the, uh, commercial park.
Hi, Debbie Fa, Oak Avenue. Um, I want to know who started this whole process, and why was it started?
Okay, the Township Committee, if, if you ask, you, the, the, I'm going to explain how we got to this point.
Okay.
But who started it?
Uh-huh.
The Township Committee, uh, decided that they wanted to look at a redevelopment plan. So they passed the resolution, uh, identifying properties that they wanted the planning board to look at. If we were capable of developing a plan like this, we would have developed the plan. We're not. So we go to the, uh, planning board engineer and say, develop a plan, the Township Committee, under the state statute, wants a redevelopment plan for these, for this property. The engineer develops it, brings it back, hands it to us, we're, uh, we have to hold a public hearing on what we're doing. We take this plan and then give it to the Township Committee. Here, we did the task that you want, you wanted us to do. Uh, then, at that point in time, the Township Committee can put it on a shelf, they can move on it, they can tie it, as Suzanne said, into the master plan review this coming year. But this is a pathway. We, we were given a task to do, and we complete, we're in the process of completing that task, and we're handed.
And they didn't give you a reason why?
Pardon me?
And they didn't give you a reason why?
You would have to hear the Township Committee meeting and ask them, because I'm not going to, the mayor's here, the committee woman's here, a new elect is in the back of the room, and I'm not going to ask them tonight, in this capacity, to comment on it.
Okay.
They could certainly comment on it at the Township Committee meeting on what, what's our thought process, and what is their agenda, uh, now that, uh, you know, a plan has been completed. That's, that was our task, that was, it was a job that we were given to do.
Okay.
And that's why we're going through this process.
All right, thank you.
There you go, you're welcome. That was an easy question.
Just to clarify.
Yep.
The plan where it wasn't asked to do a redevelopment plan, should it do a study?
Study, I'm sorry, yeah, I, I'm using the wrong terminology. Uh, it should, the, the term should be study, not plan.
How you doing? John Waitman, fifteen ninety-five Hall Ave. I just want to bring one point up. If you don't develop this as one big plan, ninety percent of these properties are landlocked, and they could never open up a, a business. You have limited access, or, uh, exit access, or whatever you want to call it off of fifty-five, you can't just exit off fifty-five and get on a dirt road and go to a business. Um, some could open up along Route Forty. Um, there would be very few businesses, you know, you keep saying a risky already exists, but it's at a much smaller capacity. Ninety percent of these couldn't develop, they couldn't open up a business, they can't do anything unless you lump them all up into one big group and develop the area. That's all I wanted to say.
All right, thank you.
Clear something else?
Yep.
The IC is, is that all the?
It's not, yeah.
So if that is the property, it's an IC.
Yeah, there's an R.I.P. in there too. Yep, yep.
Kevin Kelton, Nicholas Drive, Malaga. Um, I guess I wanted to, uh, let the public know that my suspicion is that this plan will be passed tonight by this planning board, so you need to come out to the next Township Committee meeting where the big decisions will be made. Um, right now, this is an advisory body, um, they don't approve the plan. It's a Township Committee, we have Township Committee mem, the mayor, John Bruno, Township Committee member Heather Flame, and a new elected official. So make sure it's on your calendars, because that's where the decisions will be made.
Let me stop you right there. We've known each other for many, many, many years. This is probably the first time I absolutely agree with you. Where, where it passed from? Yeah, when we were told to do something, here it is.
Uh, there was.
You're not a pastor. You are not a pastor.
Okay, I, I will. There was a, there was a lady that asked where this plan emanated from, and you had mentioned, Mr. Petch, that it emanated from the Township Committee.
Correct.
My suspicion is that the plan emanated from the Economic Development Commission. Uh, is it a commission or a committee?
Committee.
Otherwise known as EDC.
Correct.
Um, my question, it, it, who are the members of the Economic Development Commission that sit up here on the planning board?
Me, Mr. Kelly, Kevin.
Okay.
Guy somewhere.
So, I, my question is for members of the EDC that sit up here. Uh, at some point, um, there was a, uh, I, I would imagine there was some interested party that approached the Economic Development Commission, uh, a stakeholder, um, real estate developer, that met with you guys. I would like to know when that was, and I would like to know if comprehensive minutes were kept at that meeting.
Yeah.
Mr. Kelly, I believe you answered.
I'm not aware of any of that, and I'd like to know what you are aware of, because I'm not aware of any of that.
And the secretary to the EDC is also the zoning officer, and when there was, uh, people who appeared, uh, in the past, she did keep minutes, but there's, you know, the, you know, I'll, I'll let Mr. Kelly answer your question, because I, obviously, there's a lot of innuendos around your statement, and, you know, I didn't.
No, I, I mean, I already answered it.
Well, all right, yeah. What, what are you referring to?
What, what, what do you know that we don't?
We don't know.
Somebody does.
Well.
Kevin, I'm, I'm on, I'm on, what are you talking about? I don't know.
I was told that, that there was a developer or a stakeholder that came to you guys, Joe, from the Economic Development Commission and made a proposal. I don't know when it was, and, um, there should have been minutes that were kept from that meeting. Are minutes kept at EDC?
When someone shows, yes, the answer is, yes, there are minutes kept.
Okay, so if there were minutes kept.
But we haven't met in the last two months, or three, two or three, uh, I was sick at that one point.
It probably goes back further than that.
Okay.
I'm telling you, Kevin, I, I'm not aware of any of the questions.
So does, does.
Who's telling you this, Kevin? Where's your source? What, what are you talking about?
I'm not prepared to.
You're not prepared, but you can make, you can say you're.
I, I'm asking, you're denying, okay, and I'll accept that.
I know, but you.
I'll accept that.
You can't, you can't just say that and not have a.
Well, what about the other members? We've only had one person on record saying no. No, well, they can speak for themselves.
Are, are all the EDC meetings, uh, posted?
Advertiser, mom, yes.
At, at the beginning of the year?
We'd like to hear what, like, happens.
Who owns this property anyway?
Wait a minute, there's, there's three or four people talking to me, so I'm losing track here.
All right, I'm, I'm done.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm done. Uh, Miss, Miss Craig would like to use up the balance of my time.
And Mr. Kelly, I do not yield your cause to, uh.
Heck no, I'm going to start a whole nother five minutes. You are not just a pass-through committee, you have a function as a group, you have a purpose, you have an important purpose, you have a critical purpose to this town.
And that's.
I'm talking now, Mr. Petch.
And I'm.
I'm not making a question, I'm making a statement.
Okay.
And I'd appreciate if you don't interrupt, because this is serious. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. All right? You are an important body, you are the most important non-elected body that municipalities have, is the planning board. You have legal authorities that other committees and everything else do not have. You are part of the legal process, you are not just a pass-through, you are not just charged to read and rubber stamp this and say, not my job, eh, yes, send it back to TC, let them deal with it. You're charged with studying the study. You're charged with gathering information from the community, gather, I would love to change this plan, I'd like to see some development, I've got input for you, if you guys put together a planning group, all right, to actually look at this plan, all right? You're important people up there, you're not pass-through. You're going to make a recommendation, your recommendation is going to be, eh, rubber stamp, let them deal with it, all right? Your recommendation is going to be, you know what, let's table this decision for this meeting, and let's give it a little bit more thought, all right? Or your recommendation is going to be, people don't like this at all, TC, don't do anything, can the whole thing. Now, the safest one to do is the middle of the road, let's table it and think about it. But you are not just a pass-through body, okay? This is an important, important board, and Mr. Petch, if you think you're pass-through, I will take your seat January first, okay? Because this is, the most important committee we have is the planning board, all right? And you, you denigrate it by what you said.
Using the word pass-through may not have been the correct word, but the job functioned, the job functioned, I know it triggered. The job function is to make a, and that's exactly what we're doing, we, we are following the letter of the law, oh, watch your head, uh, we're following the letter of the law in being asked to do something, doing it, holding a public meeting, and sending it back to the Township Committee. So if, if you don't like to work pass-through, it's still going, we, we were assigned a task, and we're, and we're doing the task, okay?
Sorry to bother you again, I appreciate the extra time to come up here again. Um, I, I'm not making an accusation, I don't know most of you from Adam, unfortunately, you're not my neighbors, I'm sure you're very nice neighbors, so, you know. I was concerned, and I saw, I, I yelled out a question, and I probably shouldn't have a, out of order, sorry, I apologize about that. For, I was told from somebody else when I asked Mr. Kel, when Mr. Kelly denied that he met with anybody, somebody said that Mr. Constantine admitted that he met with somebody.
He did.
Yes.
Thank you. And, and, Mr. Petch, were you aware of that as well? I, I don't even, I mean, that's fair, I mean, I'm sure you, you, you gentlemen and ladies are supposed to listen to stakeholders, that's not a legal thing. I just, for the interest of transparency, would like to know who you met with, how this whole plan was hatched, and I think that we have a right to know that, just in the interest of transparency.
And I absolutely need to answer your question.
Hang on a second, somebody, somebody just said, why did Mr. Kelly lie? Mr. Kelly did not lie. I was not aware of any meetings, and if there was a meeting, maybe I wasn't there that night, but I was.
But Constantine just said you were.
What? What are you saying?
And you say, and Constantine say that you were there?
No.
No.
He always said that they had been.
Mr. Constantine, I think, was there, but I don't know if he was.
Let me clarify something.
Yes.
Can I stop you for a second?
Yes. I, I, now, Michael, I'm sorry, I, I'm going to overrule you for a second here. The, none of us met with anybody to have anything to do with this redevelopment or an application. Now, take it one step further, has people come in trying to bring junkyards in Franklin Township? Yeah. And has the board said, eh, I don't know if that's really going to work? Do you want a junkyard in your backyard?
No.
Has people came in and said, I want to put a gigantic solar plant in and take all these trees out? Eh, that's probably not going to work. Have, have we worked very diligently and had a very difficult time, uh, with Meredith Farms, trying to get somebody in here? Yeah. And have we talked to people? Absolutely. But there was nobody that any of us talked to about this and any other project that are tied to it. So over the years, has there been people that came in that had good ideas? Yeah. Had bad ideas? Yeah. Uh, did there are people that came in for the Dollar Store where Caluchis Lumberj used to be, and what did I tell them? Uh, Chick-fil-A would look a lot better there. Did they build the Dollar Store because, hey, was there a property in their right to do? Absolutely. So I think I'm trying to take your, to, to generalize question and explain it a little more in detail, where one says, I haven't talked to anybody about this is, is a true statement. When others say, I have talked to people, yeah, junkyards, solar plants, Dollar Stores, give me a.
But there's, there's no minutes for this, there's no minutes when people.
Roads keeps minutes, yes.
Okay, so, so.
I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah.
When people come to the Township or something like that, we send them to EDC first, right?
Okay, and EDC would have a formal meeting.
It's a feeling, it's really is.
I mean, I know there's a difference between me, me saying, hey, I need a new trashcan, my lid came off, like, you know, obviously you don't need minutes for things like that for minutia, because, no, I, I know that, I'm, I'm saying the committee in general, I'm saying all, the, the people, the, your public servants, so, you know, you serve the I'm saying all, the people, you're public servants, so, you know, you serve the community, and I understand that. I'm just saying, you know, this seems like it came out of nowhere, and I'm sure it came from somewhere, and I would, I'm just curious for, not even saying that this is shady or underhanded or anything. I certainly am not accusing anybody, but just for transparency's sake, because obviously the community's fired up, and for transparency's sake, it's just something that we'd be interested in knowing.
And that's the reason I wanted to get the detail out about EDC and their function and what, who they did and did not talk to. So, Rose, would you please make sure, because I don't know if it is, that the minutes of there hasn't been a meeting in two or three months, but that the minutes are up on the website, could you make sure that that hasn't occurred with Barf? Because I don't know that they are or not.
They're not.
I don't know that they're not. Could you check into that for me, please?
All right, thanks.
There was no discussion about this plan. That's why I wanted to be clear here.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
All right, back to you, Michael. Sorry about overruling you, I just had to get it out.
There's two points, we have that one person on the dot.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to turn into a debate. I think the people were making very clear points.
Correct.
And you're supposed to listen to their points, but we're trying to get into a debate over it.
All right, understood. Okay, anybody else?
Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to speak for myself, because my lawyer gave me a whole bunch of questions, and if you would please give me a little extra time so that I can go through all the questions that he gave me to ask. And most of these questions are for the planner. I also do think you should continue this into next month, so that we can have the planner and the lawyer there, because there is a problem that, you know, we don't want the town to be sued, and this is the critical stage, according to the attorney, and we need to, once, we don't want the plan approved, and if it is approved, that's when the litigation will start. So, let's not be hasty about this. It's not about the plan that's coming, it's about this. And we can change the master plan very quickly in the coming year, it is due to be done in 2023. In the master plan change, you can reflect on what all the citizens are saying and what value this land really has, and make the changes necessary to protect it, without doing this, which may make it even harder for us to prevent someone from coming in and doing something we don't want. Even though you think you're protecting us, really changing the zoning through the master plan and the intent of it would make a whole lot more sense than this plan. But anyway, let me get on to my questions, and we can talk later. Okay, the report cover page states that it was prepared by Malvika and Chris Stoci. Why aren't both present to testify?
So, to present the application, you need one licensed planner, and I am on the carpet.
And what parts of the report are you responsible for?
So, I am the project manager at the firm, and Chris Stoci is the project leader. So, he prepared the study, we have staff planners prepare the map, I overview the entire study.
Okay, for those parts of the report that you did not prepare, you can't offer an opinion, correct?
I'm sorry, ma'am, I didn't say I did not prepare. I didn't oversee the entire work.
Keep in mind, these aren't my questions, they're questions given to me by my attorney. Okay, have you ever prepared a redevelopment preliminary investigation report previously?
Yes.
Okay, how many?
Give you an odd number, I would say 10 to 15.
How many times have you been asked to investigate an area and determine that it does not satisfy any of the redevelopment criteria?
I have usually when a governing body of any municipality, and then the planning board gives us the task, they do not say whether to determine whether it's, they say to whether it meets the criteria or not. So, it's not a directive to look at it as a not complying or whether it's wrong.
Okay, but how many times have you been asked and it didn't satisfy?
There have been numerous couple of times, yes.
Okay, well, you said you've done 10 to 15. Can you give me an idea, out of that 10 to 15, what we're talking about?
There have been recommendations where I've made, you know, a couple of parcels that didn't qualify the criteria.
Okay, so that the whole project itself, not just parts of the project that didn't qualify, a couple of times, out of 15, 10 to 15?
Again, parts of the project that the properties didn't qualify.
Okay, but not the whole project?
No.
Okay.
Please bear in mind, and again, maybe I am answering more than required, whenever a governing body looks at where the recommendation comes from, it's usually the statute itself says, a governing body of any municipality has a right to look at the area that they want to study, and that usually reflects that they are either, you know, not being developed as a potential it is for the zoning, or within the municipality, they seem distressed or not or not, you know, that's why the recommendation is dropped.
Okay, when and what towns did you, when was it and what towns did you find that they were not satisfying any of the redevelopment criteria?
I can't remember, but I remember there is one study in Bayonne I did. I want to say there was one, another study I didn't go into.
One second, please, let me jump in here. Michael, the questions of Ms. Harbinger needs to be directed on this, this study, and if her attorney has questions about the expertise of the engineer, they can do that on their time, not on our time. I want, let's direct the questions that your attorney may have about this application, not about what happened in wherever type of thing.
Well, I'm assuming since he's a land use attorney, he knows that these are appropriate questions to ask.
Well, and he can certainly ask at a different time. I have a room full of residents that are interested in this plan, and not an attorney's question about the qualifications or a plan that was developed in a town in North Jersey.
Well, that's not, it's not about that.
Please direct your questions to this application, this study.
I don't disagree, I don't know how relevant it is. If each study is done, I'm assuming based upon her professional credentials, and each one turns out how it turns out.
But depending upon what happens, this could be him asking her these same questions in court someday, correct? So, you know.
Please direct your questions to Franklin Township and this study.
Well, you're basically telling me that I can't ask you the questions.
No, I didn't say you couldn't ask questions.
That my attorney wanted me to ask.
I asked, I never said you couldn't ask questions. What I said is to direct your questions to this study, this town, this community, and your concerns with that.
Okay, well, here's a question that I think is relevant to this. Isn't it true that it is your and your firm's financial interest, it is in your firm's financial interest to determine the area to be in need of redevelopment, because then you also get to prepare the redevelopment plan?
Michael.
Okay. Isn't that a, isn't that? Well, I didn't make these questions, so don't be mad at me. Well, you wouldn't let him be here, because all you had to do was adjourn us. What?
He couldn't be in here, come here.
He couldn't be here.
It was properly advertised, he could have been here.
There wasn't enough time, it's very busy with every single municipality fighting warehouse.
And every person in this room has something else to do this evening.
I think every person in this room would have been fine with the continuance, especially if this lands up.
Barbara, next question, please.
Don't you let her speak.
I'm trying to.
No, you shut up.
Thank you. Okay, and his other question was, isn't that a conflict of interest? Well, obviously, I don't think you're gonna answer that, are you? No, okay. Assuming the board accepts the findings of the study, approximately how much do you anticipate that the work associated with preparing the redevelopment plan would cost?
Again, I haven't been asked to right now to prepare.
Okay, because I thought they did mention a price when they introduced this at the last meeting. They talked about a cost for the plan and a cost.
For the actual plan, Barbara?
Yeah, yeah. Not the study. Okay, and I thought he had mentioned a different amount just for the plan portion, but you tell me. How many acres does the redevelopment area compromise? I think we know that, right?
I'm sorry, how many?
How many acres does the redevelopment's area compromise? Comprise.
388 acres.
We all know the answer to that.
Is that the piece that's already clear?
Yes. Okay, I don't know why he's asking some of these, but he's asking, how many separate properties are included in the redevelopment area?
About 188.
And do you know why these specific properties were selected for the preliminary investigation?
Again, as per the LRHL, the governing body can direct the planning board to study the area.
Okay, so basically you don't know why that was specifically chosen, I'm assuming, and only the body does. Do you know how the boundaries of the preliminary investigation came to be drawn?
It's based on the parcels we were asked to study.
Did you physically inspect the properties?
Yes.
All of them?
Well, I driven around them. They are private properties of the town.
Sorry, this is tedious, but I have to follow the advice. Okay, how long did your inspection take?
So, my office, as I had mentioned in my testimony, has been there twice. I have been there once.
Okay, and how much time do you think that took on the sites?
For me, about one and a half hour. I'll have to ask my staff as to how much time or the attention.
Okay, what were you looking for?
Generally, how the property is, you know, existing conditions, as well as what are the access areas, you know, what structures are on these properties or are not on these properties, and generally, they're of the land.
Okay, on page six of your report, you note that many of the properties in the study area are located on paper streets. That fact in and of itself doesn't provide a basis to support an inneed of redevelopment finding, correct?
I don't think that that fact alone has been added as the criteria.
All right, well, so you agree with that, okay. On page seven of your report, you indicate that the properties in the study area have been broken down into three separate areas. Was this done for any other reason than convenience?
That was done for a better understanding of the report, and I guess physically there are roads that are dividing that area, so it just makes sense in a report to do that.
Could the properties have been analyzed in one large group?
Again, the properties have to meet the criteria, so for better understanding in the lay of the report, this is the path we took.
Okay, so it's the same for the other questions that were done there? Okay, could the properties have been analyzed in smaller groups?
I mean, I think I've answered the question, this is the way we have structured the report.
Okay, so it could have been done that way, if that's the type you wanted to do, or you could have broke it down further. The way you did.
This is the way we've done it.
Okay. Okay, is it possible that one or more of the smaller groupings of properties would not have satisfied the criteria to be determined an area in need of redevelopment?
Again, we.
That's true speculation. You'd have to study that.
Okay, is it true that the designation of these properties as an area in need of redevelopment is just a function of their arbitrary grouping?
No, I think I have testified, and the report does speak to itself how they are meeting the criteria, more than one criteria.
On page seven, you note that section one and two are comprised primarily of vacant wooded lands. That fact in and of itself doesn't provide a basis to support an inneed of redevelopment finding, correct?
I don't think that criteria alone has been testified or put in the report as describing the way the properties exist.
On page seven, you note that section three consists of properties which are cleared and which were formerly used for agriculture. That fact in and of itself doesn't provide a basis to support an inneed of redevelopment finding, correct? I didn't, I don't know where he gets his questions from, so I can only read them to you. But you would agree that, you know, being used for agriculture is not a basis to say it's in need of redevelopment?
Maybe I can just say page seven is describing the sections as being.
Okay, he has another one on that one. On page seven, you note that portions of the study are located within the designated sewer service area. That fact makes those properties more likely to be developed, correct?
They are, that's another, you know, our review of the property, where it's designated in the sewer area. Whether that makes it developable or not is something to see in the redevelopment plan.
On page nine, you note the probability of wetlands and flood hazard areas within the study area. What is the basis for your suggestion in that regard?
That's the state data we received as to how the property is, depending on the wetlands and flood hazard area.
Okay, so you don't make any suggestions about those areas, other than that's on the maps?
Right now, we're just studying the properties, the plan, if it is approved as a later.
Okay, do the, do the maps depict wetlands buffer areas as well?
The maps in the report, wetland areas, yes.
But not the buffers?
No, I don't think so, that's on the state data.
What are the different types of wetlands buffers and associated distances? I think Joe answered that, you'd probably concur with the expert that it would be 150?
Again, that would have to be studied, it would depend on the type of.
All right, is it true that wetlands and wetlands buffer areas would present a development impediment regardless of whether or not the underlying property is determined to be an area in need of redevelopment?
I think that exists with the current zoning also, and with wetlands too.
All right, isn't it true that a flood hazard area would present a development impediment regardless of whether or not the underlying property is determined to be in need of area of need of redevelopment?
I think it's the same on site.
Okay, yes, I do. It's, I didn't make the question. On page 10, you note the existence of vernal ponds and potential threatened and endangered species in the studied area, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do vernal ponds have buffer requirements?
I believe they do.
And what are they?
Again, they would have to be studied when.
I would think that the state would determine the.
That's what she's saying.
Even if somebody flagged it, the state's gonna say, well, agree or disagree, we'll never really put it on.
Yeah, I'm certainly aware of that.
You're at the 15-minute mark. How many more questions do you have?
There's quite a few, unfortunately, but I didn't make these questions.
I understand, but a lot of these are.
This is a cross-examination between attorneys, it has no value on testimony to this board.
I think it's either already spoken in the report or something they would have to do a separate study to find.
Right.
So, in other words, it's outside the scope, I think, of what we're trying to do tonight.
Exactly.
It's okay to question, or as an expert, have a test of it, but I just think the questions are either irrelevant or sort of repetitive. I don't think it's really allowing you to gain anything to help your decision.
And that's to my point, is that if there was, if there's a list of questions, there's no testimony to this board in making a decision one way or the other. So, Barbara, if you have a lot more questions, at some point, I need to shut it down, you're 15 minutes in. I gave you the courtesy.
Barbara, you got my time.
Okay, because I could pass this to someone else. Well, then, he can have this, and he can read the rest of the questions.
Well, Barbara, you're pretty, you know, well-versed in this stuff. You have points, I mean, make the points to the board about what your concerns are.
Okay, yeah, my concerns are the increased traffic, and if you do this, my concern is that you're actually opening it up faster to development, than if you just reexamine the master plan, you know, start, consider what we're saying, that this is a very environmentally sensitive area, that when they made it an IC zone, maybe they shouldn't have made all of it the IC zone. Maybe they should have taken some of it and said, wait, this really isn't productive land, it's land that should be kept and retained, and it probably shouldn't have been sold in the first place to these people. It should have been, you know, put on the Rossi, the Recreation Open Space Inventory. And I feel that way also about the one at the bottom of the dam. That should have gone in the Recreation Open Space Inventory, that's a large township-owned lot. I tried to get that put. I tried to get that put on there. It can still be put on it. There's a Green Acres grant that's still open. So we should be doing that, rather than, this will open the door, it opens a Pandora's Box, as they said, where it'll be easier for somebody to come in. Once you approve this redevelopment zone, you're encouraging it, and you could, you could definitely do a better job of just rezoning it with the master plan and changing what's allowed on there with the master plan, or even if you let it develop solely on its own, because it's not really going anywhere, it hasn't gone anywhere in 10 years. Part of this report is saying that one of the criteria is, it's not going to develop on its own. Well, if it's not going to develop on its own, then why are we opening the door here and saying, let's make it developable now? You know, let's make these changes so we can get tax money and make it developable. I mean, it's sort of anti what you're saying. So let's just cool our jets here, you know, because we don't really have to do this. There's no reason, there's no good reason to do this, and there's no reason to do it fast. And like I said, I mean, I hate to say this, but I don't live in the zone, but for some reason, I can't live with this plan, and I will spend every dime I have to fight this, whether the community chips in or not. And I will appeal your decision if you make the decision to approve this. And I will walk every street and put flyers on every house if I have to, because that's how I feel about this community, and I won't be leaving. So until the day I die, I'll be here telling you, please, please put the citizens' homes and their college life first. And like they said, if, if it comes to the point where you have to raise our taxes, I think we'd rather have raised taxes than this. You know, I'm, I'm low income, and I would, I would give you more money. I want a piece of land in the area, because I want it to stay woods and to be available for people to walk on those trails. So it's not like I haven't put my money where my mouth is, and you people know me, if I say I'm going to do something, I'm going to do it. So please, save us a little money, save the town money, and just table this or say no, because it's not going away. We're not going away. Nobody here is going away. We'll be back, and we'll be at every township committee meeting, we'll be at every plan board meeting, because we are the people that pay the bills around here, and we are the people that you're supposed to represent. We don't want this. We know what it's going to be like. I grew up on Long Island. When I was young, my house was built where I grew up, the year I was born. There were nice trees and nice woods and just a little bit of commercial development down the road, maybe a mile away. By the time I was 18, there wasn't a tree left. And when I moved down here, my father said, it looks like Long Island in the 1930s. And I kept saying to myself, these people have no idea what's coming and how fast it can come. In 18 years, we wiped out, so saying it's not going to be Washington Township, yeah, it could be, and it could be fast, and I can't stand driving outside of our township now, because the roads are so horrible and the air pollution is so bad, that when I have my dogs in the car and I have the windows open, I have to put this carbon filter mask on. Here, I have to put it on for the scents and the perfumes. But normally, when I'm outside, hey, I don't need this to go for walking in the woods. I don't need this to talk to you in the parking lot unless you have cologne. So don't do this to us. It is wrong for our community. It is not the right thing to do. We could have other mechanisms to do it that will not push development on us, and they will have to widen 40, and it will displace residents, and it'll muck up the entire area of Malaga, which doesn't have great traffic flow in the first place. We have more homes concentrated in this area of the town than anywhere else, and I've walked those neighborhoods, putting those flyers on mailboxes, and I've seen a lot of it. And I hear 55 over by Iona Lake. I'm standing on the road, on the first road, on the, on the east side, looking in someone's backyard who has a boat moored there, thinking, oh, this is nice being on the lake, but wait, all I hear is 55. These people have lived with these sounds. I live on 40, and my road gets quiet. I can hear 55 in the middle of the night, standing in my front yard, and I'm over, I'm like three miles away from it. Imagine these people, that it overpasses them. You increase the traffic on that and on 40, I guarantee our lives will be miserable. You will regret doing it. It may seem like a great idea now, but you'll regret doing it, and no one will forgive you for it, I'm sorry to say. And like I said, I, it upsets me to the point where I will take my life and put on a hold like I have for the last week, and I will, I will fight this tooth and nail.
All right, Barbara, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Yes?
To say to Barbara, no disrespect to your attorney, he's a very good Laney's attorney. I think you did a much better job for the purposes of tonight of getting your point across.
Yeah, I was upset that I wasn't, I didn't think I would be able to speak from a residence and someone who's been walking these areas. And I'm glad you let me.
Rather than those prepared questions, you made a better ability of making your point.
Yeah, I didn't like them that much, but I'm trying to listen to my attorney's advice. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing none, seeing none, at this time, I entertain a motion to close the public portion.
Move to close the public portion.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Moving second, all in favor?
Aye.
Before, can I say, can I address the public quickly, very briefly? First of all, thank everybody for the contributions tonight. It's greatly appreciated. And for those that don't know, Franklin Township has an environmental commission where we discuss these type of issues every single month. Every plan that is reviewed by planning board, zoning board, and township committee is first reviewed by the environmental commission and with an eye on the environmental impact. And we've had very low community involvement. For the last couple of years, we haven't even had a full membership, so if anyone's interested in these environmental matters, the email for the environmental commission is envcommission@franklindtownship.com. So if you want to email that address, and if you're interested in an environmental commission, you are involved in a great deal of the game.
All right, Sean. Okay. Michael, walk me through the process now.
Okay. I'll tell you exactly what the statute says. Okay. At the hearing, the planning board shall hear all persons who are interested in or would be affected by determination that the delineated area is a redevelopment area. All objections to such determination and evidence in support of those objections, given orally or in writing, shall be received and considered and made part of the public record. After completing the hearing on this matter, the planning board shall recommend that the delineated area or any part thereof be determined or not be determined by the municipal governing body to be redevelopment area. So you're considering the report, testimony of the planner, considering what the public had to say, and you're either saying this whole area is not appropriate for redevelopment, it all is, or I just want what you heard, you're going to pick and choose.
Okay. Before I, before I ask for that, the, there was a couple, there was a couple pieces that was talked about, the Leonard Cake Road, the access on the Leonard Cake Road piece of it.
430111.
What do you mean?
430111.
11 and what about 1 and 2?
Yeah, anything that has the...
Anything that, anything that is touching Leonard Cake Road. Mr. Kennedy's suggestion that no one on the board or committee have any financial business if, if there is an application in the future. Mr. Kennedy had suggested that no, no one has, I'll cut my own throat doing this, the, have a financial interest, a business interest in an applicant.
Yeah, Mike, I think that maybe you could draft a representation already for the members to sign off on.
Is it too soon for that, Mike, here?
Yeah.
This is a plan.
Yeah.
But this is a plan.
If there is.
Not that I disagree with what Mr. Kennedy said or what you guys are trying to say, but I don't think this is the problem. Would it be more appropriate to put a note in the full approval, the partial approval, the denial? Would that statement be appropriate as a footnote to testimony provided at the hearing? Would that be a better way to go?
I don't think you could talk about somebody having an interest in, you know, providing a landscape thing if there's a project five years down the road. And I think at this point, if there's someone on the board who has a direct interest in some parcel of property, then that's something that should be reviewed.
Okay.
Or nearby parks.
Well, then let's take a different approach. Three township committee people are here. They heard the, no. Oh, Michael, okay, all right. So they have heard the comments, they can carry that back in their future reviews.
All right, I'm not sure what you're concerned about with tonight. That's what I'm forgetting.
Well, the accusation, you know, there's an assumption, an accusation that people are in this for, people are in this for the, for a monetary benefit. And what I'm saying is that if you sit on the board, you shouldn't have a monetary involvement.
If somebody has a monetary benefit, now's the time to reveal it, if not, you know, I didn't worry about it.
What do you legally have to abstain if you had a monetary involvement?
Yeah, that's true, too. That's true, too.
He documented through a representation and warranty, and I don't see why you can't, why that could be a problem.
I don't know exactly what that is. Is that terminal?
You represent and warrant that you're being honest, that you have no financial interest in anything.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If anybody does, they either should have revealed or they should reveal it now before they do.
I don't think anybody does at this point. I don't talk about the future. Okay. Okay. I have a question.
Go ahead. One of the residents offered a suggestion to table this and allow the board to take the time it takes to dissect the plan and take certain pieces out. We're supposed to do that, right?
Well, you can. But that's why the plan was provided ahead of time for review and preparation for tonight. You know, obviously, I'll... Could I make that motion?
Certainly, anybody can make a motion to table or to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to table the vote on this tonight. To put our expertise to it. We're all Franklin Township residents. Where are you guys? Just up here. And I think we do need to look at this.
I would like to second Mr. Constantine's motion with a preference, preference to what Ms. Suzanne McCarthy said. I was not aware that we are up for 2023 revisit of the master plan, and I know that our decision tonight has to be consistent with our master plan, and I know that every member up here has to vote on what is legal, and I think it would be, hold us or help us to decide in the future if the master plan was changed to allow certain things and to rule out certain things. And of course, this area here includes three different zones, Malaga Village in IC as well as RA, and I believe, again, as I seconded it, that this should be postponed until the master plan was revisited.
I want to make one thing clear. You're not, you're not adjourning for more public hearing, because that's been closed. You're talking about having time to deliberate in your own minds and come back and vote on.
Yes.
I don't want the impression to be they're going to have another whole public hearing.
No. I think it was pretty clear what the vote wants.
Motion in a second.
Okay. Hold on, please.
Mayor Bruno.
No.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Ms. Wayne.
I'm not, I'm not comfortable with continuing until we know these lots on 4301, 678910. So I need the time to be able to see the information. My answer is no.
Your answer is no.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it's, I'm sorry. It's way past my time.
Yes is to, yes is to continue to, no is to not, okay. Okay, continue.
Mr. Cowley.
Yes.
Please, table.
Yeah, I, I want to make sure that the lots are accurate. I'm not, I would not be opposed to making recommendations to adopt this, but I want to make sure that these lines are accurate and they reflect what's really in place, especially given Venice's property. So my, my support, table.
Mr. Millie.
Yes.
Mr. Stipper.
Yes.
Mr. Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Travol.
Yes.
Chairman Ketch.
No.
Motion, motion's passed.
Okay. Yes. Thank you. That gives you a lot of credit.
So just to clarify, what would happen at the next meeting is, we have an opportunity to discuss among yourselves.
Correct.
There could be a motion, a second to vote.
With respect to the vote that was just placed, the, there is no public hearing at the next meeting. We satisfy the requirement of a public hearing. Each of the board members need to be responsible and prepared at the next meeting so that a decision can be made one way or the other. I disagree with my colleague of waiting for the master plan, because that's altogether different, this, this could be put into the master plan in the future, but the decision on this needs to come at the next meeting. So everyone needs to be prepared to, at the next meeting, to make a decision on that.
Can we, can we have the information of Ketch's board?
Yeah.
If, if we're going to take lots out, can we please have the information of what the rotation, everything that these promoters are coming? But they're saying that there is a discrepancy.
Rose is going to work on, on the discrepancy on the...
If there's not a discrepancy, then fine, but let's work...
Agreed, agreed.
Thank you.
Heather, Heather, if we take the lots out, it'll...
Well, that's, if it was going to go that way, I'm sure you might have...
We take everything out.
And that, and that's fine, but that's not the way that motion went. That motion was like...
No, you can still redo that. You can still do that.
We know who wants it out.
Yeah, by taking everything on Leonard Cake Road out, it eliminates that piece of it, but it has a help to the residents there. Let Rose still investigate, see if she can get to the bottom of the different tax maps. Okay, let's go, we're going to continue with the meeting. Now, because we're not going to, there will be no further discussion this evening on the redevelopment study. All right, at this time, I entertain a motion to open the public, general public portion. Moving second, all in favor? Aye. We're in second public portion. Anyone wish to approach?
Nora Craig, I'm proud of you all. Take your time, look at it, see what should be in there, what shouldn't be in there, and communicate to the public.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's get the room under control, please. Thank you, Nora.
Thank you.
It seemed like there should have been two votes taken. I know there wasn't a motion, a second, but it seemed like Mr. Travolone's proposal was different than Mr. Constantine's about how long it should be tabled for. He seconded him, but his, that was different, so maybe there should be two votes.
As an extra.
As a comment?
Yeah.
We achieved our agenda of postponed the decision this evening.
All right, you guys have a good night. Thanks.
Thanks, Frank.
Bill Morris, O'Gavadu, just a comment at the meeting was recorded, it will be up on YouTube and the station by Friday morning.
Back to you. Anyone else? Moving second, all in favor? All right. Moving on to reports, the annual municipal league report, PIG, applies to the state. Excuse me, we're trying to get through the rest of the agenda. Can you quieten the room, please? All right, the report, please.
The state requires the agriculture advisory committee to make a plan once per year, annual The state requires the agriculture advisory committee to make a plan once per year, annual report. The agriculture advisory committee is a subset of the planning board, and all the members receive a copy of the report. It's a budget of what expenditures will come forth in the next three years. If all goes well under farmland preservation, five farms will be preserved next year at a cost to the township taxpayers of $227,000 currently. There's almost $900,000 in the open public space fund. $200,000 of it has been earmarked for the Pine Hollow Preserve, leaving $700,000 for farmland preservation. And yes, this community is concerned with open space preservation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Rose, do your planner report, please, and the review of the 2023 schedule.
Okay. And so the 2023 schedules in everybody's package, just take a look at it. That's going to be our set dates for 2023. I believe our first meeting is on January 17th for a reword. Just an update for the, from the Land Use Department on some of the bigger violations. 4066 Tucko Road is 90% compliant now. We're still working on 870 Harding Highway, which is the pool company down there. It's still in Superior and Municipal Court. And 2034 Pine Hollow Road, also known as the Biaggi Farm, it looks like it's been sold now to Greenville LLC, and I'm working with the current owner about getting the property completed once and for all. The department and Land Use, all the departments, zoning, housing, construction, all fit is very strong for the year. Did, we definitely met our budget and did very well.
Thank you.
Okay, motions except the planner's report. I second. All right, I'll move. All right, I'll make the motion. Stephanie, roll call because it has to deal with money, please.
Mayor Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Millie.
Yes.
Mr. Ramsey.
I'm sorry, did you call me? There's somebody in my ear. Yes. I know. I missed the call.
Mr. Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Travol.
Yes.
Chairman Ketch.
Yes.
And I vote yes also.
I'm sorry.
All right, Michael, is there need for a closed session?
Would you like one?
No. No, I would not. See you next year. Okay. Does anybody else have anything to bring, to bring up this evening? Hearing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moving second, all in favor? Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you very much for coming out.